All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for August the 9th, 2023. It's 5:30 PM. By the way, this is also going to be our budget workshop. But we're going to take care of some in-house business before that by going through the agenda. Everyone is here, everyone's present, we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation by...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the D.C., Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation is going to be delivered by Mr. Derek Quinn.
If you please pray with me. Father in heaven, we just praise you as our awesome Creator, as our sovereign leader, and as our gracious Savior. We just thank you for the many blessings you give upon us. We thank you for the food tonight. May you bless it to our bodies and our bodies to your service. And we just pray for tonight for good facts and good communication and good discussion as we look at the budget and look at the city's future. We just pray you would help staff and help council to make those good decisions. And we just, most of all, thank you for Jesus Christ. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen. We're going to move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to the city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. We have one speaker, Ms. Deborah Williams.
So I am here because I read in the paper that you all received some money and you were going to help with the area called Tamina. And so my grandmother was born and raised in Tamina. And my mother was born in 1939 in Tamina. And unfortunately, I wasn't born there, but I did live three months of my life there. So Mr. Elijah Easley, I don't know if any of you have, I hear, see heads nodding. If you remember him, he passed away in April. Well, I had the fortune of meeting him before he passed away when they had a fundraiser. And I cannot get in touch with anybody from the Tamina Sweet Rest Cemetery. So I have taken it upon myself to finish the job that he started. So there are approximately 200 graves over there. I have a list of 142. So in you all's website, believe it or not, you all show this picture. And most of these people are buried in that cemetery. That is amazing that we have a record, now we have a picture record of who's buried in that cemetery. The problem is, people have taken it upon themselves to do whatever they wanted to do. So you have people who have built their homes up three feet above the cemetery. You have Broadway that is almost two feet above the cemetery. You have Sleepy Hollow with the reserve that's almost two and a half feet above the cemetery. The dam has been shut down. There's, water is not flowing in the ditch. I've talked to precinct four Commissioner Gray, who's also assisting. I also talked to Larry Foster from the Historical Society, and he's willing to help. But we don't know what to do now since it's dry. It's been wet since Harvey. Now it's dry. So I don't know what to do to get it to stay dry. I understand that you all are going to help with drainage, sewer, and water in Tamina. But I don't know how it's going to affect the cemetery. So I'm here to get help from you guys to let me know what it is that the community needs to do in order to get the cemetery back. So I've talked to Ms. Onamay Pearson, who is 91, who can tell you everything about Tamina from the beginning to now. I've talked to Julia Levenston and her husband James, who are residents of Tamina. And of course, my mother, who's 80. And Ms. Rosemary Weber, who's been a resident of Tamina. And we're just at loss for what to do next. So I need you all's help to let us know, and I've sent several emails, to let us know what can we do. Do we need the land survey? Do we need a civil engineer? Do we need to contact Texas A&amp;M to see exactly where the graves are? How do we build the cemetery up so it doesn't flood anymore? Because we know one day it's going to rain. It's going to rain again, hopefully soon. But we don't want it to rain before you all get to see the cemetery dry and see what damage all the water has done to the graves, the headstones and those little wooden crosses that they had out there. They're almost all destroyed. But you can walk on it, that's a problem. The problem is, there used to be a dump to the left of the cemetery. So we're not sure if all that dump contaminated water has gone into the cemetery or not. So people are afraid to go back to the grave site. So there's just a lot of plea from me to help so that I can get the community to help everybody who's involved. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, we're going to move on to item number six. Discussion on possible action to approve an interlocal agreement with Montgomery County for the David Memorial Project.
Counsel, this revised interlocal agreement is now between the city of Shenandoah and Montgomery County to move forward with the extension through the city limits and the county. We need to take advantage of some dry weather. We can't let those wetlands permits expire. So the county is on board with this. They passed it unanimously through Commissioners Court yesterday. And so it's now before you. We are still talking with the city of Conroe, but as of right now, they have not approved the original interlocal agreement.
Motion to approve. So we have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Cloud. Any discussion? Well, I just want to say that, you know, we, we have to maintain our commitment that we made to the, to not only our community, but the surrounding communities. We can't go back on our words, and I think it's imperative that we initiate this project as soon as possible. And I think that's why it's important for us to, to address this right now in a positive manner.
Absolutely.
All right. On this, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I said without a question.
Oh, without a question.
I thought you said you had a question.
Sooner the better.
Sooner the better, I agree. All right. Let's forward on this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Item number seven, discussion on possible action to award a contract for construction of David Memorial Drive. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Bratt, seconded by Councilman Raymaker.
I would like to hear what, um, Joseph wants to say.
I was just going to say that with the action taken by council for the additional funding at the last meeting, all the funding is in place for this project.
Any additional comments? Yes. Right. All right. On this motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Item number eight, discussion on possible action to approve change order number one for the Vision Park Phase One project.
This change order is for some additional outfall pipe structures, adding some pipe runners visibility, sorry, to prevent entry into this pipes. At certain size, you want to have protection so people don't try to crawl into those. It was, it was on half of, of the outfall structures coming in, but not, not the remaining. So this change order is to pay for those coverings. I will add, it's also adds the additional days just due to the rain delays. It's hard to say that how drained it is, but the rain delays that we're having throughout this project, so that adds its counter delays based on weather.
So this is, so this is for an additional 16,000?
Correct.
Because I got confused when I looked at the sheet and it had 16,000 in percents.
It's actually a deduct.
It's a, it's a deduct.
Pardon?
It, it's a deduct.
That's what I was trying to make clear, that it was a deduct, not a add-on.
Correct.
Very good. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Fletcher.
All goes back to MDD too, right?
Yes.
Perfect.
It's always good to hear money coming back to the city.
So we can spend it on the next item.
Right, exactly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion on possible action to approve change order number two for the Vision Park Phase Two project.
I spoke to the last one, this one is an add. This is due to the fact that the contractor was spreading the clay liner in the northeast corner of the pond. There wasn't enough stability, the soil didn't have enough, it's muck. And so they needed to do some excavation so that that clay liner would not fail. We looked at several options, the best option here, the cheapest option, was to take that muck out, and then when they put the clay liner in, to just spread it on top of the clay liner so it's not going to affect the permeability of that liner. But this just came up because we, we want to make sure that liner's not going to fail.
Is the clay down in any part right now, or no?
What's that?
Is any clay down right now?
Yes.
Okay, so the part that's been leveled out flat? Okay.
Right. They, they moved on that quickly, as dry as they could get the pond, they wanted to get that done first.
Scout noticed that.
So they can move on to the other things, not work that upon them.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
Second, I have a Councilman Pollard, I heard him first.
So this is actually an increase to the deduction. So we were saving 244,750, and now we're just saving 207,280, is that correct?
Correct.
Can we pass this on to MDD then? Next agenda? Or no?
Do we need to, um, talk about the MDD?
Sorry, I was doing budget stuff.
Is it an add?
It's an add. It's an add.
Yeah, it's an add.
It's an add. Oh, it's an add. We can, we can approve the funding.
They approved the deduct.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I still want to do it, it's just that I didn't know if we wanted to approve it.
MDD approves funding, you guys approve changes.
Fine, that's good.
So.
So we'll see it on the.
So the money hasn't been transferred.
So we'll just do an adjustment.
I guess the question is, is that quarter million already been taken out, or it's?
It'll net, it'll net out.
We're going to net it out.
Yeah, because MDD, they don't approve change orders. You guys approve the changes to projects, they just approve the funded projects and make recommendations for the project if scope, if they want.
Basically, they'll have the one and ten items in that.
We can.
Right, because we still have.
Just to, to make sure they're aware, yeah.
Okay, on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Item number 10, discussion on possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance by the city of Shenandoah, Texas, authorizing settlement of the post reconciliation of Entergy Texas Incorporated, finding that the meeting complies with the open meetings and making other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring an effect predicted.
Counsel, this idea came to you previously, proposed reconciliation, and we were advised to allow our representatives to discuss this with Entergy and with the PUC. And now, that we approve this, is agreeable, and the actual balance is lower than the original personnel. So, there's not going to be any.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, item number 10, by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by, I'm sorry to catch, one second. Councilman Bratt. Any more discussion on this item?
So, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make this big, but it's kind of hard. So I've adjusted the revenues a bit, you'll see. Yeah, I've given you a copy of it also. So I've updated the certified values for the property tax. I redid the interest, looking at current trends. I also did have a call, I mean, a meeting with Hilltop Securities the other day. At the next meeting, we'll be re-investment pool option, that's yielding a pretty good interest right now. So we're going to start doing some heavy, with the interest rates so high, we're going to start investing a lot more. So that's revenue that we're anticipating. Sales tax, based on the current trends and the anticipated new business, I did modify that number a bit. I also, the transfer records that come into us from Water Sewer and, um, Water and Sewer, CBB, and MDD. I did have to modify those a bit with the elimination of the position in admin, and then also with the insurance premiums dropping because the Water Sewer employees and CBB employees, you know, contribute back into the general fund to pay back their portion of the insurance. So that's the changes to revenue you'll see on the top there. So going down to expenses, the few changes that I have listed, so there was the elimination of the records clerk position, so that added money back into the budget.
You have that on there twice, is there a reason for that?
It's, it's for the different GLs, so their salary, retirement.
Okay.
Well, the salary's on there twice.
Are you talking about the revenues?
Yeah.
It's because one's from CBB and one's from Water Sewer, the GLs you'll see.
On the reduction of administration fee?
Yeah, so the 571200, that's from the, because CBB and Water Sewer pays 10%. And so is MDD of admin personnel. Well, MDD only does personnel. CBB and Water Sewer do 10% of total admin fees. So that's the change up there. So going back to the expense changes, you'll see admin, the elimination of the records clerk position added several dollars back to several lines. We did have, we did add training for the executive admin assistant that was left off in the preliminary budget. And then there's also an addition of a human resource and policy review service. Courtney and I talked to TMLRP, our insurance provider, about some HR items, and they gave us some references. So Courtney had gotten some quotes, and that's what we're looking at right now for some policy help. Non-department, I changed, I took out all the medical increases that were hypothetical. And then also, the rates did decrease, so that was also deduction. I got TMLRP to send me over the preliminary estimates for our contributions this year. And as you'll see, some of them did go up. So that changed a bit. And then in the police department, there was a promotion, so there's a vacancy. And there was a 10-year employee that left, so that added some money back into the budget, all those, you know, changes.
Are we, Matt, chief, are we planning on trying to hire somebody with roughly equivalent tenure? Should we, should we leave that money in the budget with that, that desire?
We're going to take what we can get, I'll be honest with you, but.
And that's why I'm a little concerned about cutting that all the way back.
So on the scale, it, it, it won't be to, to, to that value because he was a sergeant.
Right.
So.
But I mean, when you hire a sergeant that's had, you know, 10, 15 years' experience, we're going to need to pay him.
We just ramped one up.
We promoted some money.
Right.
I mean, that's true, we just promoted the sergeant, but.
Yes, we did, and we promoted him at the, at his rate for his, his time on the scale. So it was, it was further down. So there, there'll be some.
Okay. I just want to make sure we've got enough money to hire the people we need to hire.
Right, yes.
I did put this at the step three on the PD one scale, so it's at step three, which on his hiring scale covers years of experience, one to five.
It's, uh, yes.
About that, yeah. So I kept it kind of at the, the mid-year, mid-end. So that's that. We did have to add some money into PD's budget for Halloween candy, or for the Fall Festival candy that was left out. Then there was an increase to the pool's pest control services, it was minimum. And then I didn't realize, but my Questa Good contract increased, and it's part of the agreement, it was 500 bucks, it goes up. But that was the only changes I have right now. So with those changes, it brings your budget surplus up to, up to 492,840. That's unencumbered in the budget right now. So. Is there any other questions about other departments? Did we want to go through each department again, or was there anything that anyone had noted about anyone's budget that they wanted to change?
The only thing on, on this particular sheet is, I'm looking at additional human, human resource and policy review service, what is that?
So me and Courtney, we're going to be doing a whole personnel policy overhaul this year to get up, because it's probably outdated with some of the new laws that have gone through, especially with like workers' comp and stuff like that. So we're going to work with a service that helps you be getting compliance with what legally needs to be in policies, give you some tips on how to do certain procedures. And also, it opens up the option that they could be a service if we had an HR issue that we needed a third party to intervene in.
So it's not going to include anything looking at salary scales or comparative salaries that we need to do?
I'm not sure, but that would be probably Kathy's question.
If counsel wants to take a look at that and, and have a consultant give some input, we would definitely come to you.
So this is basically the same scope of services that Gail used to bring for us?
Correct. And we are, as Lisa said, we are working on a policy manual overhaul, and that's going to take some time to put together, and then we need somebody to review it, give us some advice on any changes that we need to be aware of. We've also found in recent years that there are certain things that come up that we don't have quite the expertise that we would like. So we don't have a huge project or an ongoing daily need, but we have identified some things that we will need some expertise on. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
And I will note, Courtney was the one that she was looking at, they, the lady has, like, 30 years of municipal experience, so it's a very more focalized HR.
Yeah, Bill took a look at her resume today, and he said it was very good, so she has a lot of great background.
So I guess I'll just go down the list if there was any questions.
Wait till I catch up, okay.
No, you're good.
Yeah, why don't you go through the departments and then they'll just pop things up.
So I went over the general fund revenue. I was comfortable moving sales tax, mixed beverage is still down, so I'm not going to touch that at this point. I kind of cut that pretty significantly. Other than that, there's no really increases to revenue.
So under the, under the property taxes, then that number's no longer 493, 474?
No, because I was taking the halfway point from what I thought it was going to be. So it came in lower.
So that number now is the one that we just showed up there?
Yeah, the 308. And I'll send you my Excel sheet.
Okay.
So moving on from revenue to admin, is there any other questions about the administration budget?
I'm looking.
Only one. On, how many mailers are we going to have to communicate with our community residents? Is it still two a year, or did you bring it up to four?
We carried over the two.
Yes.
I know we had discussions about perhaps adding to that.
You've got budget to add a third one if you had something you wanted to.
And we actually did the, we added the senior rides mailer last year, that was a huge success.
So the postage should be enough to cover the 64 for you?
I think we upped that a little bit.
Yeah, it's up from last year.
Yeah, last year was 5898. I might have increased it for an additional mailer. Let me find mine, sorry.
Ooh, and then there's the finance department coming up, that's what we really did.
Yeah, we increased postage 550 for an additional newsletter, I believe. But we can look at that as well. Any other questions about administration department? Okay, moving on to finance, nothing changed in finance.
Your mid-year?
Finance.
Finance?
Yeah.
Remove somebody from budget, I think you hired.
Tammy was booed into utility bill to be in the year, so she's on Water Sewer now. And Kristen came into finance, accounting position. Yeah. That was approved in the budget last year, so it wasn't mid-year.
That was in mid-year, okay.
Yeah, Kirby was, so that's why admin salaries look a little bit higher.
That was it, okay.
Can you take it, but I'm in.
Lisa, could you pull your microphone out? Not coming through very well. Pull the whole thing.
All right, thank you. I want to break it. Yeah, okay.
Sure, let the councilman break it.
Yeah, Chris can't yell at you. So community outreach, there, so, I don't know if Kathy, you want to take this one, but as you'll notice in the budget, there was an increase to certain line items, certain event items.
I know Debbie can probably answer some questions if needed.
Yeah.
I mean, you all had a civic club last night, right?
We did have civic club last night, we really didn't discuss the budget.
I mean, Chris has got it.
We did have civic club last night, we didn't really discuss the budget, but civic club budget is.
There's no microphones over there, we need to come up with a podium, this means be on record. There's no microphone over there, they're not on.
Oh, because they've been moved?
Ma'am?
Those mics are on?
Those mics are not on.
Okay.
Okay, third time's charm. We had civic club last night, but we didn't specifically discuss the budget. But this is the easiest budget that you probably got. You tell us how much money we've got to spend, and we'll spend it. You tell us how much money we've got to spend, and we'll spend it.
I know, we, we received some comments from council members at the last city event that you all would like to see us grow these events a bit more. And also, we'd like to talk about the anniversary event. But we need to see what we have to work with, and then get some further guidance from council. And that's where we're headed tonight. Some of this stuff is not, some of the items are not reflected here because they're, they're unknowns until we get through these discussions.
So historically, the, the Halloween event, do we, do we have some numbers? And we call it a Halloween event, like how much candy and...
I'll pull it up for you.
Because I don't see anything across the board, I know it's...
Well, PD, it used to be on PD's budget.
Yeah, it was in PD's budget, not ours.
Right, that's what I was, I was trying to get, so the actual money we're spending is gonna be increasing a certain amount, but not, not the 15,000 we're talking about.
I don't think we're gonna need near as much candy from the way we discussed distributing it. That was, some of the complaints that we had from the people's, the residents' input was, it was too much candy.
Too much candy.
So I think how it's gonna be distributed, as we discussed at some of the event, that it won't consume as much candy, so I think we can reduce that.
I just, I know they're asking for 15, I know, in the past, it was a police, I'm appreciative of moving to community events, I think that's an appropriate place to budget for it. I guess my, my point is, we're trying to get a comparison between how much more are you asking for versus, what are we looking at doing versus just typically the cost of candy, right?
The difference is gonna be that this event is going to have activities, where when we had the Halloween Safe Streets, it was basically we blocked off and gave out candy. This will have inflatables, different events.
Right, it's gonna be an event.
It's going to be an event.
That's, that's different than what we've done in the past.
Yes, very different.
It's not the parade, it's not just handing out candy.
No.
It's actually gonna be a community event.
And in some cases, adding, adding events.
We will be, that's, that's a specific event that we're adding to the community outreach.
And police is still budgeted for candy, it's just a reduced amount, like Joyce said.
Yeah, so prior to...
So that's what I was trying to figure out.
Prior to 2020, we would, we spent about six grand on candy, and then after that, we spent about 4800.
So are we still looking at ask, I mean, we're, we are, because it's in the budget. Does it make sense to still budget, to still have police budget for candy, or does it make more sense?
I didn't particularly think so, but that was the direction that they were going.
My thought was, put everything, put all in this event, we can all keep track of it. I understand this police overtime, it needs to be in police budget and things like that, if necessary, if we can't do it. But to me, this event needs to be all in here.
Yeah.
The whole bill needs to be able to be seen.
Well, they, they budgeted 2,500, right? So it's a small add to the...
So I'd just like to move that out of police.
That's fine.
I, I, I think the, the, the concept was just because people felt safe about the law enforcement buying the candy. And that was, that was the history behind...
You're still gonna buy it, it's just for budget, for costing, so we can see...
Yeah, no, totally.
You know, it's accountability to go, I can see what the Halloween event costs versus what Lightning Angels costs versus what everything else costs. So that's what I'm, I'm gonna ask, that we need, that we simply move that. And then I would point out that this is an increase, but it's not from zero.
Yes.
And we're moving again from either candy in the streets or the parade to an actual event that's gonna be put on.
Correct.
Just in case people are curious about that much.
We'll still go pick it up and everything like that, so it's...
Yeah, exactly. And then what was the difference, what were you thinking about for Independence Day? Do we know, that's, that's almost doubling.
Well, we increased it this year.
Right.
And then we had to cut back because of the weather. So we're taking the original plans that we had for Independence Day, which was a lot more additives to it, and going to continue to grow on that. We had a lot of good comments about different events that we added into it and wanting to grow that, so...
So what was the actual expense this year? Was it much different than this five?
I can pull it up.
Um, it was close, it was maybe a thousand dollars more this year.
65, 54.
Okay.
Six, 500.
Because it's, all right.
Yeah, these books are printed in June.
Fair, fair, I, I was just curious is the best. So this is a, it's still a significant increase even over last year.
Any other questions about community development? Nope. All right, non-department, I just, you know, I went over that. The, the insurance went down, and then the changes to the TMLRP insurance. And other than that, nothing else changed on that budget from the preliminary. Any other questions in the non-department, or?
I'm waiting to hear fire.
That's still under view. All right, are we talking about non-department still?
Oh, no, I'm doing non-department, it's fire.
Ready for fire.
Yeah, so the fire...
Fire away.
So the fire, I left that number right now. Me and Bill are trying to set me with the Woodlands Township to go over the agreement. So right now, I'm holding this, because it's very close to probably what the tax number's gonna come, you know, after protest. So I will leave it at this for right now. But there will be an update hopefully by the next meeting.
So we're gonna leave it at the 1-866?
And, yeah. Unfortunately, the huge appraisals last year really messed us up with that agreement a little bit.
So I won't ask you to swag this one.
No, we're still negotiating, we're still...
We'll figure this out.
They're in their budget season, we're in our budget season, so it's the best time to kinda talk about this right now. So next department will be police. So we're gonna move the candy out of police over to community development. And then other than that, the only changes were to their personnel costs for all the personnel changes. Is there any other questions about the police department at this point?
So the numbers are in there at this point?
So the new, got the, the two people, the two...
No, this is just, this was...
We're not talking about the officers?
Not yet, no, that's gonna be later on.
Next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna get through the generic...
The next agenda, we took it later?
Yeah, operating.
I wasn't cleared on that.
Number 15, next item.
Just kinda finalize out this and then move on.
That's where all my questions are.
Yeah. If there's no other questions?
I thought we were gonna get to that fund tonight.
We are, it's just, I'm trying to go through the general operating.
All right.
Oh, okay.
Next department would be municipal court, there's no change.
Oh, yeah, I got this.
Is there any comments or questions about municipal court?
I, I might at another meeting after I see the next municipal court, I'll inform the board.
Okay, okay, because Jackie's not here. Uh, next department's Public Works, there was no changes from the preliminary budget that was presented to you.
Quick question, sorry, municipal court's basically self-funded, right?
So we don't have an active court, so we just collect warrants, old warrants. So what it does is, there's just some money in there for contracted work that pays the prosecutor and the judge, yeah. And then some minor credit card services and stuff like that.
Yeah, for those of you that are interested, maybe haven't been to a municipal court, there's one scheduled on the 24th of this month.
She usually sets them quarterly.
The 24th?
Of what, what are you talking about?
The next municipal court.
Oh, okay, I couldn't hear.
Jackie usually sets them quarterly if there is anything for the docket. So next department will be Public Works, is there any question? And as I, there has been no changes since the, this preliminary budget, so...
So, okay, all right, no changes here, we're gonna talk about the scale?
Yes.
Later. Okay.
Any other questions?
Just the only thing, I, why did City Engineer Retainer, did that go from 14 to 30,000, did that double?
No, that's, you're...
Okay, 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 okay.
Oh, you know, I think...
All right, all right.
I believe we factored in either a 3% or 5% to the current contract, but it wasn't, yeah, not much. Any other questions? Okay. Uh, next department's pool, as I stated, the only thing that changed on that is just the pest control went up a little bit, like 500. Other than that, nothing has changed in this budget.
The, is it Willis Swim Team is still running?
No.
No.
And the Sharks contract is going up next year, I believe.
Because it's got swim team heating, so that's all for the sharks?
Yes.
And that's just estimate based on the years, I mean, if it's like this year's pretty warm out, it was almost...
Right, it was, it's just an estimate, we...
Yeah.
It's a wash typically, so there's a revenue and a expense at wash.
They pay the bill, whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other pool questions, we'll move on to parks, much, nothing changed in the parks department. From the preliminary budget. Any other questions about parks? Community development, nothing has changed from the preliminary budget about community development.
Do they have any more information on the new permitting process to do a digital? When will we see something for that?
Uh, that's a Chris, Chris question?
I'm sorry, I missed it?
The permitting process, the digital permitting?
The MINE.gov?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of, of looking at several different products. We've got one, we're pretty much, I think, what, 99.9% sure. And then, the great thing about it, it's gonna move us kind of forward into paperless, a lot of the modern, very modern, online contractors will be able to go in there, keep track of their, the process, their permits, do everything, submit their plans online, digital plan review, and, and end-to-end digital process, so it'll be really nice.
I know we talked about it a couple of years ago, and now you feel the same software, is it's ready for primetime now? Or is this a different software?
This is a different system, we're, we pretty much signaled to Tyler Technologies that we're gonna get away from version nine. You know, we've done a lot of discussion, a lot of meeting about it, and they're just, there's, it's just not a product they're developing anymore. They want us, they want us to move to the new intergov, which is a six-figure program. And it's just way overblown for us. So we got to looking around, and there's actually, the company we're looking at, it's actually another council of government, and they developed their own software, they've been doing it for about 17 years. The nice thing about it is that there's no onboarding cost at all, even though all the migration is done at no charge. It's based on the amount of permits that we issue every year, and so they give you, you know, basically a this number to this number, so on and so forth. It's, it's a great deal, great deal for us.
They're gonna, they're gonna cover any integration between our current system with InCode?
It's, they've already got that worked out, they've already got it built. I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it sounds like a kind of too-good-to-be-true thing, it's just what they do. And they have very good mark, high marks from people we've talked to that, that use the system. It's MYGov, but all the demos, everything we've, we've looked at, it's, it's, it's pretty bang-up stuff. I think, I think everybody would be really happy with it, it'd be very...
Well, thank you for looking at that, because I know a couple of years ago, I brought that up, and it was like, you know...
We, we tried to keep moving forward.
I got to look for that, but, um, thank you for taking care of that.
No problem.
And this will also provide us some other administrative tools beyond the permitting, plan review stuff, so it's, it's gonna be great. And you'll see, Chris...
When will this occur?
We, um, we, we talked about implementation, it probably won't be till after the first of the year until we actually go live with it. Just the timeframe, of course, obviously, we don't really, there's not really, we're not, there's no ask on the budget end for any front-end costs, it's just a matter of...
We've got the money on it.
The interlocal agreement, that's gotta be done with their council of government, and then getting the implementation, just the process, it'll take a couple of months, several months. But I think we, you know what we talked about last time?
Yeah, and then...
Last year, January?
The, the good thing about it is that Jackie does collect building technology fees on her permits, and it's in a designated fund. So she's using those funds to purchase whatever they need for this program, so it doesn't come out of the operating budget. These are funds that are set, that are, the contractor pays on plan review, that then helps them keep digital ties in with their programs.
Why don't we set a target date so we can, you know, something...
Start following up on it.
Start following up, or, you know, so we can...
Well, yes, sir, we'll come out with a project plan on that, and then, you know, something that's very definitive. Once we talk to them and get it lined out, we'll present something.
This way, this way, we can alert all those contractors that are applying, they have plenty of time to prepare for this, you know, automation, you know?
It'll make their lives easier at this point.
Yeah, make it easier for them, yeah.
And then, it's, just to jump forward a little bit, in Chris's budget, there is an, there is an, some money put in there to do our conversion, because court is also in version nine with building permits. That will be going to version 10, so we can totally get rid of version nine altogether, which is nice, because version nine is the most antiquated software of our CMLI. So we'll be fully on Tyler, InCode 10, and then we will have the building permit program separate, so...
Will this apply to all permits, or just the building permits?
All, well, all permits, all of our permits, our building permits, our...
Alcohol permits.
Business licenses as well, if we move forward with that, it handles that as well.
And how, how will that interface with, now that we're dealing with, with the one-stop shopping, with the, with the township? Will that interface in any way with, with whatever they use, or how is that gonna be?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing a piece here?
The Grogans Forest area is...
The Grogans Forest area?
We, we revised how we handle permitting with those areas, because they have Woodlands covenants as well as our codes. And, I mean, I'm no software expert, but we're issuing permits, for one, we should be able to continue that process.
Obviously, Jackie has more details than that, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with the details of, but yes, it more or less will handle. Everything we need to do as far as permitting. I think, I think what it comes down to, I think there was some discussion over the permit count, and, you know, how we, how we do all that. How many actual permits we issue, I was, that's, that'd be more of a Jackie question.
And I, I know she based it on historical numbers, so...
But definitely get more information out to everybody on that, but...
Did they resolve their travel and training, then? I know that I questioned the last time, that they weren't burning the training that they had budgeted for.
It was just because they were still in limbo with the credit card transactions, so I have...
And the big Tyler conference is what, every other year?
It was, they were charged, like Kevin's travel was charged, but it had not hit the GL yet, because you don't reconcile until the end of the month. That's what I meant, sorry. Like, it wasn't hitting the GL totals, it was still in process, and so, and then I know Jackie had just did some of her travels, so... Sorry, give me a moment. Actually, it doesn't look like it's hitting yet. I know she just did something. So to date, there's five that's been expensed, but when I look into it, it'll be in... Give me a, sorry. Oops, I may have blackened this one. She has another, she has her Buckley School hitting soon, so it'll probably bring that up closer to...
But this is for next year.
Oh, yeah, for next year, I thought you meant for her balances this year. Yes, next year for a travel and train, she only has 13,2 compared to 19,6 this year, because she was going to the Buckley School, and she had Tyler Connect. So she went to two trainings this year.
Yeah, but my recollection was that over the past three years, they hadn't been coming even close to burning their full...
Yeah, we looked at it, so, um, it was the building inspector position that was vacant. We did hire someone who was only here a little short term, and then they left. And then Kevin wasn't hired until, um, sorry.
It took us a while to get him.
Yeah, it took us a while to get Kevin. So Kevin just went to train, and I think he has another train set for another certification, I think he's working on his plumbing. So it'll add up, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
No worries.
I had a note, but I don't know where it went. I had a note, but I don't know where it went, about all that. So I had to relook at it.
Too many screens open.
I know.
So if you have a question on, uh, forced maintenance remediation, that's been a lot, did we move that from somewhere else?
It was in PD.
It was in PD.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought we had this.
So when Code Enforcement came back over, it was one of those ones that, I think.
Bounce back and forth?
Is this the first year it hit? Because I think it was one that we just overlooked constantly.
Okay.
Um, it's all, you know, it's all general fund. It's just, yeah. So Steph got hired last year, so we, it was.
Oh, this is the appropriate place for it.
Yeah. It was one of those things that got overlooked.
Okay.
And that's usually, um, a wash, because we put, we will.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions about community development? Yep? Uh, moving on to technology, um. I don't believe, we didn't have, the only thing changed was my contract with Questica. Also, um. Sorry, Chris, it's doing the thing again.
Cybersecurity.
We got it. Sorry. Go ahead.
Cybersecurity?
Yeah, the cloud cybersecurity. But we, we talked about that before.
Yes, um.
The MDR, Consulting Professional Services?
I couldn't remember what it was called.
I mean, I've been doing, I've been breaking my neck on this. You know, one of the biggest, one of the big discussions this year at conference, um, you know, obviously, there's a lot of new security threats. There's a lot more complicated stuff on the horizon, especially with all this AI, and it's, it's real concerning. But not to get off into, to, to too many details, but more or less what, um, you know, myself, and I've talked to other cities, and a lot of them are doing, is they're bringing in professional services to, uh, augment their security, because obviously, you know, they're in IT, I'm a one-man shop, you know? So it would, I feel like it would be a better use of our, um, resources to, um, bring in some managed services, as opposed to trying to, obviously can't support hiring another IT staff, and that would really be unnecessary. But spend that money on professional services and people that are dedicated to their security experts. And more or less what they're doing is that they're taking all of our, all of our logs from our, our firewall, our router, from our workstations. And they monitor everything that comes in and out of our network. And if there's any type of, um, threat, any type of detection, anything that goes on, they immediately respond and remediate the problem. Uh, they're, they're, it's proactive. So they don't let me know, and then I have to go put a ticket in. They monitor everything that goes on inside and outside of our network, and then they take care of it. So they're kind of a, a whole security team that, that sits over our security and, uh, watch, you know, watch guards over everything. Uh, those services are not cheap. I've been, about seven different companies I've been talking to. And I even met with the Woodlands and, uh, talked to the company that they're using, um, and, uh, uh, got some recommendations from them. So where, where we're at right now, we put a thirty thousand dollar placeholder, but actually, one of the, uh, after talking to everybody and getting some quotes and getting things boiled down, that number is gonna be closer to forty, uh, for a minimum, what I feel would be a minimum amount of, you know, it, it sounds like a lot, but when you.
No, it doesn't.
Well.
Not for IT.
Not for IT. But going from nothing to, to that, when you consider how much it costs to recover from a ransomware attack or.
Absolutely.
The malware, you know, somebody said to me that, well, you know, uh, Shenandoah is so small, it really is not the size of our city. Our data is just as important as the Woodlands or the City of Houston's. If we can't operate, it impacts us tremendously. One employee that we have now came from the City of Tomball, and I think she said they were down, um, two months?
Yeah.
Two and a half months, they couldn't get their data. They had a ransomware attack. And I was just blown away by the minimum security that they had in place. I was shocked.
I've seen Fortune one hundreds down for three to four months recovering.
Yeah. It's, it's crazy.
Stuff, yeah. So it's good that you're doing this.
But I'm not gonna say that, and the thing I wanna accentuate is that it's not a silver bullet, and it doesn't mean one hundred percent that you won't get hit and something won't happen. Your, your biggest security risk is, is the people sitting behind the desk in the offices, your users. Because email and things that they do by going to websites or opening email, um, is, is the number-one cause of, of infections in, uh, with companies and, um. And, and of course, we do, we also do, uh, security awareness training. So this is just another layer. Obviously, the most, the best security, uh, strategy is a multi-layered approach, and that's what we're trying to do. But, but there again, I'm just a, a one-man shop. And obviously, if I'm on vacation or I'm gone, I can't respond to all these one hundred percent of the time. So it's, it's not fair to me, and it's not fair to the organization to be at that risk. I'm not saying this is something we necessarily have to do. We can continue what we're doing. I just feel like this would be a better situation that, um, uh, would, would, the city would be in. And not only that, they, they also offer an additional, they augment our security, our insurance, with their cybersecurity insurance. So it helps offset the cost of recovery if something happens, and, you know, it, it just, it's just in addition to what we already have.
I want to add to Chris. Cheryl with TMR PR, Member Service, um, Manager, came out yesterday to talk about our rerates. Um, and she did indicate that, um, the pool is changing how they're going to pay out for insurance, uh, cyber ransoms, because they are getting hit with a lot. Texas is the number, it's the number-three state in the country that gets hit with ransomware right now. So the pool's been taking a pretty good beat in with this, so they're restructuring how they pay out ransom claims. So it's a good level of insurance to have with them as well. Um, they'll still pay out if there's something happens, but the, it's gonna be a little bit more. It's not gonna be a hundred percent.
If, if, if council does want to go that route, um, we would get a better rate doing a multi-year contract, uh, like a minimum three-year contract. I'm, I'm a little hesitant myself to do that, because obviously, you don't know anybody well enough till you're, till you're living with them for a little while. And so, you know, I, I like the flexibility of being able to change, but yes, of course, getting a better rate for the multi-year contract was, is advantageous. I think my approach, you know, would be, I'd like to do it one year and see how it goes. If it works out, then come back and do a multi-year. And then, you know, so initially, we might pay a little more than we may otherwise. That's fine.
I think that's a good approach.
Yeah, I agree.
One thing to mention, or, or a question, and you mentioned this, do we have some support in place if, the situation where you're gone? You know, whether it's, whether it's a two-week vacation, or, you know, extended illness or whatever. Would, would this provide for that, or is that just, this is simply some cybersecurity? And if not, is, are, are there services out there that would allow for that? I mean, little minor stuff, even, you know, again, two-week vacation, somebody's printer's not working, that can be annoying, you know?
Sure. Um, I, this does not cover any, any of the managed, the managed services. I have talked to a few companies, I've had them, um, I haven't brought anything this budget year, you know, I can certainly go back.
I knew that, I just, yeah.
Uh, but, but yes, it is in the forefront. I mean, it's, it's much cheaper to do this, and it's to try to, you know, we obviously don't support a multi, you know, IT staff. I mean, yes, I'm busy, but I don't think we support, you know, a whole nother FTE, but, um, I think it would be prudent for us to look into something like that. I, I'm more comfortable, because obviously, I'm never truly gone. When I go, it's, you know, I've got this, I'm, I'm connected all the time, checking in, make sure there's no problems, and so, you know, it, it.
As long as the internet's working, you, you can help if you're in, you know.
Yes. Thankfully, we have nothing major, knock on wood, um, but, uh.
I, I just, I think that's something to be, again, prudent, and to be thinking about, is, what, what's the situation? Do we, do we have, um, a local company that we could contract with that, again, if, if you're gonna go out, or, somebody that, you know, knows how to help? I know in the past, we've had sort of interlocal agreements with some other cities where their IT kind of knew our system, and we knew their system. We could cover each other in emergencies. Maybe that's where we wanna go, or maybe we wanna look at professional services with a third-party company. But I think some sort of plan for, I mean, you know, you go out sick for three weeks. Like, if you're out in the hospital, you're not checking in. I don't, you know.
Yeah.
I don't care what you, you know, you may want to, but.
It's the reality. That's the reality.
And, and we don't need, and, and just like we don't wanna be down because of a cybersecurity attack, I don't wanna be down because, because you're out for some reason.
Sure.
Or if you just, you know, you wanna go to board a board for a couple of weeks with your wife, that's, you know, that's, that's, uh, something else you may wanna enjoy, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Well, Chris has been, um, eh, eh, great about responding even when he's on vacation. Um, I mean, eh, but you're right, this is a good point. I called you one day, and you're on a fishing boat, you know? You're not gonna have your computer.
I still answer the phone.
I know you did, you did.
I rock in one hand, phone in the other.
But, yeah, it, I mean, you never know if something happens and he's not available.
And it is, and, and, um, it's, I've kind of been working on my business continuity disaster recovery plan, whatever you wanna call it, and that's part of it. And, and that's something we really need to do.
I just think with that, you need to kind of push that up and, and push that to the forefront, and, and maybe, you know, between now and December, you come back with some ideas.
Absolutely.
Before the end of the year. How are we gonna handle that? Again, business continuity, whatever. I mean, if, if Chief's telling me the officer, none, none of the videos are recording, and you're on vacation, that, that's.
That's an issue.
That's an issue, we gotta deal with.
We talked about this, the last time this came up, too.
Yeah, and I, I wanna kind of, as, as the mayor said, for the other issue, I wanna put a flag in that and go, you know, maybe, uh, before December, we get some, at least some ideas and some plans and some.
Sure.
Calls made. Um, and so if we, if we could really do that, I'm, it's just something, again, if, when, as, as somebody who lived through the last transition, um, of IT people, and, and you're not going anywhere. But, um, that, that's a, that's an issue. We, we can't live without our IT staff. And that, right now, that's you.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's where we talked about, you know, more, more cloud things. We don't have to race to the cloud, but the more we get in the cloud, the more turnkey the service is.
It, it is. It, there's a lot of advantages to it.
All right, I appreciate that. It's one of the.
It's, it's on my radar.
Other description here of managed detection and response, cybersecurity. So not only will they monitor it, but they will also take action once they identify some sort of attack.
Yes. And that's, and that's one of the things, I went to the Woodlands, and I met with a couple of guys over there, talked about their experience. And, I mean, they don't wait. I mean, if they see it, they immediately respond. They don't call me and then tell me what's going, they do after the fact, but they, they take care of it. So they literally monitor everything going inside the network, in, and flowing in and out of the network. So if there's, anything happens on a workstation, any kind of detection, they pick it up and respond immediately.
I just wanted to clear that up for those who may be watching.
Sure.
Uh, that, uh, that it's, it would be two or three-step process. Identify, monitor, identify, and, and correct.
They, they're telling me that from detection to response should be no more than several minutes. That's how fast it should be.
All right, with that, that completes the general fund expenditure.
Did, did we, I, I didn't wanna miss fact that, that I, we did a thirty thousand dollar placeholder?
I put ten onto this spreadsheet.
We added, okay.
I just did it.
So I think the quote I'm at right now, the hot, the, the best quote I'm at is thirty-eight and some change right now is where I'm at. And I'm still working on that.
All right, any other questions about general fund? Okay, uh, move on to CBB. I haven't, just the revenue at all, um, that, I will review it though before the adoption. Nothing has changed. John is working on some, um, advertising, um, agreements. However, there is a placeholder in his advertising, um, GL that's, uh, fifteen percent market contingency, marketing contingency. So that can always just be, it's, you know, applied there, and if it comes over Kathy's Porches and Limit, it will come to council. But other than that, there's no change at this point on CBB.
Have we gotten any information on whether we could use any CBB funds for a small mailer? So when a new business starts up, that they could send a postcard to residents, so they would know that the business exists?
Well, technically, how CBB funds are used, it's, it's for tourism promotion, so, um, you're, a tourist is considered someone that comes from another city, municipality, county.
But they could be bringing in people for, you know, to stay, that might stay at a hotel, because everybody wants relatives at their house.
If you're sending a mailer out about hotels, possibly, but if you're doing businesses.
Well, that's, so we, we could notify hotels, but we could also, if we could talk with hotels, and we could do a joint mailer. Basically, if they're willing to share their data, and I know most of the time they're not, but if they're willing to share their data, we could jointly advertise their hotels and our new restaurants. Hey, next time you come to Shenandoah, go check out this new restaurant. And so we'd be sending them to, in other words, that would be the heads and beds aspect. So they would not be to our residents necessarily, but the same idea, but you would simply send them out to people out there and just, you know, talk with John and see if that makes sense.
Yeah, does it, are you technically a tourist only if you stay at a hotel, versus I came to your city because of some of the amenities that it has?
Well, that's, that's CBB's paid-for with hotels, so, yeah, you'd have to. You'd have to make that argument.
To advertise to your local residents is not allowed. If you advertise to a municipality over, county over.
Right.
It's part of the CBB two-part test.
Yeah.
You have to be promoting to visitors for hotel business and tourism, period. That's the first part. Then there's nine subcategories of how funds can be used. But first and foremost, and throughout, it has to be visitors to bed hotel, to, for hotel room nights and conventional business.
Saying if, if.
So were you saying, Mike, like?
I said that you could look at, so you could, if you could get a hotel department with you.
And give them their guest list.
Say, hey, next time you come to Shenandoah and stay at X Hotel, check out these new restaurants. That is something we could do. I don't know, I don't know if the ROI on that makes sense.
I, there, there's.
You know.
There's probably some myriad things there that could be difficult, because one is the sharing of that information and data, which the major hotel companies aren't gonna do. And so all of our hotels are branded. We don't have independence, per se. And so that's gonna be problematic. Um, and that's proprietary, so, um, you know, our, what we are trying to do right now with Billy on board, we've gone to our six social media channel, uh, channels, and we are, you know, every, every week, I just, Billy literally just came in the office this morning, and we were talking, because he sent out an email. We are working with, um, our lists, um, of our hotels, our restaurants, and all of the businesses here that are tourism-related. And every time he sends out, um, monthly, I think he does it monthly, uh, it's not every two weeks, it's every month, I think. But he's reaching out to all of them, saying, do you have any specials? Do you have anything we can help you promote? And every time we do this, they are getting back with us. So I think today, he had like six or seven responses on a few restaurants. We had two stores. We've got this special going on. We've got this promotion going on. Um, and so we're able to try and leverage that via our social channels, do blog posts, get them on the news stories on the website. So we're trying to look at those appropriate things for our businesses that we can do that way, while still looking and trying to look at, as Lisa said, there, as I'm working with vendors now, we kind of get, especially on our two biggest programs and platforms, we try to get to year-end to look our year back and see what needs tweaking. And I'm having conversations with them last week, this week, and, and next, to find out, um, as we're broaching year-end of any cost increases and any changes doing. Some of it can be platform-technology related. Sometimes it can be market conditions and what's going on. We have, I think I shared with Kathy, um, earlier today in brief passing, that we have, like, in some cases, we might have been on a platform or doing this on our own or without our competitors. And now we have big competitors jumping in the space with us. So it's, it's, you know, those are kind of the things that we're looking to adjust and to finalize.
And I, you guys are doing a phenomenal job on the social media. Um, and, uh, I see a lot of, um, introductions of new businesses and promotions and stuff. But I also see a lot of follow-up word-of-mouth with neighbors saying, I've been there, it's great, or whatever the case may be. So, um, but, and, and, uh, so that, that really seems to be effective. We have talked about, uh, sort of a more global approach to, you know, uh, promoting our hotels and our restaurants, and, and all the amenities that people have when they come here as a guest.
Well, and we've talked in the past, and I know we did this a couple of years ago, and we're not proposing to do this this year, but we have, and this idea of taking a sliver of his budget, putting it under general funds. And that would allow him to spend some time and energy promoting, um, our, our local things to local people. And so, I mean, Ron, if that was something we wanted to do, it would take a small sliver of our, of our budget to, to spend that and, and really focus more on local, you know, Shenandoah, Woodlands, Oak Ridge, Conroe, bringing those bodies who are not gonna stay in our hotels, but will eat at our restaurants and will shop at our stores. And I don't think that's a discussion we should have tonight. I do think it's a discussion, we should probably talk about revisiting if, if that's something that we wanna do is, is a more global, uh, promotion. I mean, I, I think anytime we advertise our hotels, obviously, why do you wanna come to Shenandoah? Well, shopping in restaurants.
And it's safe.
And it's safe, and, and that's. And it's safe. And, and that's all, the whole, the whole package, right? We got shopping, we got restaurants, we got the hospitals. Um, we've got a great police force, but.
And to let y'all know, through those social channels, that, that's a big way. We're doing that right now on our, um, followers and things that are doing, you know, we are targeting and we're doing social media boosts right now, just for you to be aware. So we're not doing this, no, it's not just organic. We're actually boosting and trying to get that out so that we're heightening, um, our placements and growing audience into the surrounding area. And so those are things, you know, we've been, we're about four months into it, and much like Chris said, for him, I'm trying to look at with our budgeting and what we have done at that for a years, you know, at a year's end, when we're there, how has this, which would, in Billy's case, will probably be sixteen months. And when we go out, we've, we've already allocated for funds for some of that and some other programs and platforms that he's doing. Monitoring right now, um, efficacy, search engine optimization, other things that we're looking at. Um, or, or doing, I should say, but watching, monitoring progress and all of that. And so I think those are the things that, as we, um, continue to refine that, if those budgets need to be increased to do larger areas, geographically speaking and what we have. And a lot of that is, you know, I think I have shared with y'all and y'all are aware that we really did through all of the strategic research and stuff, find that the city, we are so unique in this tiny spot that has an economy more driven from a travel and tourism perspective, more like a beach town where people come in, drop and leave, and we, we benefit.
Right.
Um, and so, um, to your point, being in the fourth largest metropolitan area, having all the surrounding communities, for our local businesses, the restaurants, the shops and storekeepers and all of that, that's critical to what we do. So trying to help elevate them and say, why staying in our hotels and being here is a great thing to do, is what we're doing. So, and we're, we're exploring and doing these new, looking at new channels and stuff as well.
And then speaking of those new channels, as we go back to transfer to general operating, have we refreshed the number for the rent? Have we researched that?
I looked at LoopNet, um, nothing's really changed. Um, so I didn't modify that number at all. I can review it again, but I reviewed it when I was doing the budget numbers.
And because as Kathy alluded to, uh, safe tourist, our happy tourist, I don't see an allocation going to the police department. Tech gets some, admin gets some, finance gets some, audit gets some, legal gets some, in-code fees gets it. How about something for PD?
Because you can't quantify. So what, those cover is because CBB doesn't have their own, um, financial staff. They don't have their own, they're a part of the city, but they're a blended component of, you know, they're their own funds within the city's, um, budget. But they use a lot of Chris's time, my time, uh, finances' time and also administration's time. So that's why you can quantify that.
And the laws, to be very specific, the laws, the legalities of this are, we cannot pay for anything that should come out of general administration funds, period, legally speaking. So if it's a general admin expense, as opposed to our tourism related.
If you guys were as good as tell me what we can do instead of what we can't do, I might be a lot happier.
Yeah, well, I, that's.
Legislation, unfortunately.
Um, I mean, there, there is some stuff. I, I just, I guess my question again, it's really for tonight, it's just something that, that I do think we should push off and talk about, is using y'all's talents, 'cause y'all are very talented and yet you've really rejuvenated CBB and you're making a big difference and I'm seeing it, I'm hearing it. Um, but if the council, and again, future discussion, but I'd like, I would like to think about it, if we would like to take and pay for some of your talents out of general funds with the idea to bring, to use that talent, but use those same, the same connections you're making now as part of CBB, but use them, but we can't use CBB money to pay for them. So we need to pay, whatever sliver that is, we need to pay for it out of general funds. But the idea solely for that campaign or those campaigns would be to take local people who live right here or are not gonna stay in hotels, but drive into our businesses. Um, but you know.
Like LPRs for hotels or something?
Yeah, I mean, they can be anchors, right? But it's, I, I think that's something you and Kathy and Lisa may need to.
Advertising, for instance, uh, at CIST events.
Yeah, uh, there's, there's, that's, well, that's, that's, yeah.
You, you promotional stuff, you know, like.
Right.
Two-for-one dinners or, you know, ten percent off.
Whatever the, whatever the.
Whatever, whatever restaurants are willing to, you know.
We kinda tried this a couple of years ago and then COVID just hit us right in the middle. We actually budgeted it and then it didn't, and we had COVID and then it blew up and then we decided to do away with it. But I think it's time, we're post that, we're beyond that. It's time to consider what we could do, how much that would, how much, how much energy and effort that would take. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask.
And I'd suggest that we use some of the, 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 the resources we have through the PR fund, thirty-six thousand firm, thirty-six thousand dollars there to look into that and see what we can do, uh, to broaden our advertising. For hotels primarily, but really for everything.
Uh, motion for a bathroom break.
Denied.
Do I have a second?
Seriously, does it, you need a, need a break?
Yes.
Take a break? Fifteen minutes?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break, uh, a little soon after that. And after.
See, we do have backup.
We ready, Chris? All right, we're back in session of the workshop section of this agenda.
Okay, sorry. So continuing on, if there's no other questions about CBB, we'll move on to debt service. Is that good? There's only debt service, you know, it's based on our on our schedule, so the only thing I will say is that from further conversations with our auditor, the loan refund payment, that actually has to stay within 600, even though they do, I have it set up as a transfer record, it's just a clerical thing, it's not anything
Thank you.
So I will change that in the but- the final budget document. So moving on to water sewer department, I am going to be working the revenues, Tammy just got reads in, so we should have some bill numbers within the next week. Once again, we had a very dry month, so revenues are probably inflated again, but we'll look at that as well, the revenues. There is, I don't have any changes, I don't believe, to the operating budget from the what you've seen in your, other than moving that loan payment back into
We don't, we don't think we're gonna have anything more than the already planned amount for groundwater reduction plan?
So that's all based on pump it, like, it's a multiplier, so what me and Joseph typically do is we estimate the revenue and we just offset it with an expense GL, so it really doesn't contribute anything, you know, because we're supposed to use it for
If we can wash it down, yeah, if we can reduce that, we're just gonna reduce, the income's gonna be reduced and the building's gonna be reduced.
Yeah, it's like a, there's a one-to-one match, so.
When are you gonna figure out the transfer to capital projects?
When we talk about projects? Sorry? Because I don't know what we're gonna fund or not. We have MDD set already, and that's in the packet, so there is water sewer and general fund eligible projects we need to talk about still, and then once that happens, I update that transfer to capital projects, and then I create those GLs within the fund 400, and then fund 400 will come back into the budget.
And I realize we're not gonna do this this budget year, but as, as you wrap up this budget year and it be finalized, I would like you both to be working on what we need for reserves and what we need for that wet, wet versus dry years, if we could
Yeah, I was talking to revenue already, I'm just seeing what Tammy was gonna, what it's gonna yield in, we just did reads yesterday, so
Okay.
They'll be in the system soon.
Again, kind of put a, put a target date of early December, if we can
Yeah.
Have an idea what's going on there.
Joseph, I have a question about this replacing aging meters, what is the, the status of that, how many more do we have?
Well.
All of them are aging.
They're all aging, that's what I was gonna say.
All of us.
They're all aging, just like all of us.
Let me rephrase the question.
So
How many are not new?
So on the commercial side, we've, we've got a lot more older, actually, I was just talking with, with Mark about this today, because he's working on, on looking at compound meters in particular. We still have a healthy number, I mean, I'm gonna venture, you know, 30 to 40 commercial meters, these are larger meters that could stand for replacement. What we're doing now, though, is just, because we, we don't have the money to just get them all taken care of at once, we just budget in our operating budget enough to take care of those that fail, and if they fail, we want to have that money available to get them swapped out, because we don't like giving away water. I could, I could get you an exact number, we could pull that number for you, I just don't have it offhand right now.
But it's a, it's a number, it's a substantial number?
Yes.
On supply chain problems?
Yeah, that was my question, because I know Oak Ridge went to supply, to move one of their large meters, and it was six, eight months.
It's, that's true, and that's better than what it was before. It's, you know, we were waiting for some residential meters for almost two years.
So is there some, is there, is there a reason, I know some of the meters, one of the reasons we replaced them is they're not accurate, some of them are working, but we know on our other meters, you know, that may not be accurate, should we be moving faster to replace some of those?
We have done some spot testing of the older ones, they're still, you know, 95% and 90% accurate, so it's, while it isn't 100% or 99 is about what, what you usually get to, it's not bad, it's not real bad, there, there definitely is some loss, because we're giving away more water than we're selling, just because of the inaccuracy of the meter, which, that's how it works, when it's inaccurate, it works in favor of the customer, and that's just the way it wears. I mean, I'd, I'd love to get it done, because I like to, you know, get all the, out with the old and in with the new, but for that one, we've just been kind of hitting it year after year out of the operating budget, and what we do is, if there's funds left over, if there aren't any this year, I've had to ask for some budget amendments this year, but in the past, if there's money left over for non, you know, not replacing dead meters, then we would take those remaining funds, get the oldest ones, and get a couple changed out.
Good revenue source for us.
Yes, yes, you want to make sure your meters are working, don't, don't want to give away water.
In commercial being 70% of your revenue stream, commercials are focused, usually, residential, we'll replace them as we, you know, can get them, but commercials, we really like to get those replaced quicker. Any other questions about water sewer? The next department's utility billing, I have not made any changes since the preliminary budget was posted.
It wouldn't be a budget meeting, or
That's, that's, that's upper discussion.
I have a whole item about that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a budget meeting if we didn't talk about credit car fees, and I know that we're fixing to.
Is that now?
The only other, the only other thing that we could do that I bring up a lot is being on the appraisal board and never getting any traction on that, I get all your votes, but if I could get the school district skeeter to vote for me, maybe I could be on the appraisal board, so. All right, carry on.
Okay, so
So we're not, we're, we're not, really not gonna discuss it?
It's num- item 15, it's in
I brought, I brought it to you.
Yeah, we've, we've got a little handout here, okay.
Okay, so if there's any, any other questions about utility billing, or the whole water sewer fund in general, no? So non-major departments, the park verification fund, this is kind of a, it's the revenues from the park pavilion rentals, tennis court rentals, and I just do a flat in and out, we have, it's been picking up a lot, and Joseph is able to use that to replace stuff at the park, buy some supplies, if we need any extra work there, so trees, plantings, we usually try to use some of that money for that, just keep it pretty.
Yeah, I try to use it up every year to, for
Yeah.
Pretty flowers.
And mulch.
And mulch.
And mulch, if we need it in addition to what's already in our contract, yes.
Based on your schedule. Okay, next fund is your trash and recycling fund, our contract does go up, is it 5% each year?
It's 4%.
4% on the trash, and then, so trash is covered by the general fund, and the only thing that the residents will pay for is recycling, so.
When is that contract coming?
2025.
25?
And then the last non-major fund is the, the Metro Park Square pit, so, just so if anyone's new listening about what the pit is, the pit was created with the Sam Moon Group, it's that section over there that's between the Portofino and the old Sam Moon Center, and it was created as a benefit for the developer to put in the infrastructure for us to then own, the city took out bonds that are solely supported by the assessments on those properties, so there's a schedule, it goes to the tax assessor each year, and she bills them, and they are responsible for paying that, the city never is out any money on those repayments, and then the benefit to the city is that we get good infrastructure that, and right away, that we can control. So I, it is blank, it'll be, it'll be updated before we were working to get the final assessment rolls over to the tax assessor, because you look at different factors in the administrative fees, so me and Mitch, our pit administrator, we're working on that, so that will be filled in, but
The important thing is, I'm not sure everybody knows, is this has nothing to do with our budget, it's something we have to watch and report on.
Yeah, and, but they require me to make a budget for it. So that's why it's in our budget.
Right.
Because it's treated as like a blended component kind of idea. Okay, so that's all for operating that I have, is there any other questions, since we've gone through operating, no? Okay, so, just to give you a heads up, your final, and this is before we, I do have a couple adds, possible newsletter increase, and then coverage service for Chris, and then possibly some marketing tools, but I think all that's probably not, it's probably gonna be minimum, I don't think it'll be a whole lot of money that's gonna affect this at this point.
Well, and just, you know, when, when you come up with a plan for, for cover for Chris, just bring that before, I don't, I don't know, there's a lot of, until we have a plan in place with the budget, I don't see any point to put it in our budget.
Yeah.
It's gonna be an amendment, but
Yeah, no worries, yeah, so just to let you know that those are not on this, but there are a lot of notes that we'll discuss and we'll look at. Okay, so we'll go to the point, the next part, so I, this year on the agenda, I kind of made it different, I did a special consideration item section, just because it makes it easier to keep track and keep organized, so as many of you know, I'm actually in my master's course for government accounting at this point with Rutgers, and last budget, last class I took before the summer was all about budgeting, and I, and what I learned from it is your operational expenses should be your recurring expenses, you know, it should be, and maybe some minimum one time, but very minimum amounts. So I looked through our budget when I was looking at it, and the two things that really popped out to me that were in our operating budget that technically shouldn't be there per the definition of operating budget is gonna be the Tahos and the equipment replacement funding, technically because they're both capital investments, so you can use any surplus to budget those, but I think that should be something that we talk about at the end of our operational discussions, and say, hey, here's where you're at, do you want to fund this from, you know, there's different mechanisms you can do, you can look at last year's budget surplus, you can look at what you're budgeting this year for surplus, you can look at your unencumbered available cash, you know, or you can set up a funding plan from any of those resources to fund these into those appropriate funds. So I pulled those out just because technically they are not operational, and I kind of want us to get to a practice of kind of doing things how they should be doing, done, and not just because we want to do it that way, you know, so.
I mean, that's fair, maybe, maybe we need to talk about it, just simply come up with a different name, because, you know, planned annual expenses is how I've viewed operating, and I understand the difference, the, and we talked a little bit about operating versus annual, because I'm one of the ones that really pushed hard, because we kept talking about the Tahos every year, and I'm like, if the police force needs two to three Tahos every year to operate, and we're going to purchase two Tahos to three Tahos every year, is that not a recurring annual expense? And one of the reasons we do equipment replacement is for the same reason, is because we want to make sure we have money in the bank to replace these items, these half-ton trucks, et cetera, street sweepers and things like that, so are we just, are we just talking semantics here, or are we actually talking about pulling stuff out of an operating budget? And I know last year we talked about working on our emergency reserve, and we pulled the Tahos out with the idea, and I think that was a smart, smart point, is that if we go into emergency stage to the point that we need to pull from those reserves, we're not buying Tahos that year.
And we're probably, yeah.
Right, so it doesn't make sense to put the Tahoe money into our emergency reserve, but year to year, even if we don't buy Tahos, if we run that two or three years, we're gonna be behind, right? As we come out of that, one of the things we're gonna have to do is purchase Tahos to get sort of caught up, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like, we, we've still got to plan to purchase Tahos, you know, I'm using those, but there's all this other equipment too, is it really, are we really talking about operating expense, are we, we're still talking about we need to budget these expenses every year, even if they're not technically operating?
Well, I think we need to look at it as a whole, is that if we have another down year like pandemic, and the Tahos are coming in 91,000 each, and we're having a huge revenue shortfall, are we gonna be buying Tahos? So that's the theory, whereas we have to pay people, we have to keep our contracts up, so these are kind of those one, there's a, they're technically purchases that are not, you don't have to do, you know what I'm saying, like, when I'm thinking of budget, I'm thinking of what do we have to pay? We have to pay our insurance, we have to pay people, we have to pay that, this isn't one of those, and that's why I said we need to probably pull this out, like contractual obligations we'll have to pay.
Sure.
We might be able to scale them back, but
I'm just saying, do you say, do we, but it still should be in our expected budget?
We'll talk about each year, it just won't be factored in.
But I guess that's my point, is unless we're in an emergency, unless we're in an emergency situation, we're buying two to three Tahos a year.
Yeah.
I mean, is that general consensus, that that's been what, that's been our practice?
Yeah.
So
But that doesn't necessarily make it an operating expense.
It doesn't.
Exactly.
It's a, it's a capital expense.
Well, is it a capital expense?
It is a capital expense, because it's a capital asset.
If we're, isn't it an asset if we're getting rid of it in three years?
Yeah, it is.
If we can get rid of it, absolutely.
It is, the value is the determinant, yeah, it's got a useful life applied to it, yeah, so technically it is an operating, I mean, a capital
Schematic, so can we move forward?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't care where we put it, it's disclosed, and that's what we need.
Yeah, I, my thing is that if I'm, if I have Troy or I have Joseph come to me and they say, hey, we need more staff, I don't want to have to forego staff for Tahos.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, to balance our budget, I don't want to have to be like, hey, we have to raise property taxes, pay for Tahos.
You're not pulling it out of our, you're not pulling it out of our expenditures, it's coming out, you're pulling it out of operating expenses.
You're trying to figure out the funding.
And you're, you're trying to identify where the funding's gonna come from, it's a capital expense, whether we use
That's what I was saying.
Fair, whatever.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're thinking about the money right, and, and how we're, how we're spending money each year.
Yeah, so basically, like
Right, but it's not, it's not, it's, it's not an operating expense, so in other words, I know that the salaries that we have to pay, I know the contracts we have to pay, I know those things have to be paid.
That's a fair point.
The Tahoe does not, we can push the Tahoe.
Push it.
Yeah.
I can't push her salary next year.
Or we could find another funding mechanism.
She would not appreciate that.
Or we could, yeah, or we could find
She would leave.
I was like
So it becomes discretionary, right?
Minification, I guess.
So it becomes more discretionary spending.
Okay.
It's something that we're gonna allocate.
It's something that
It's something that's gonna be at the top of the budget line in a capital expense, but it's not mandatory in our, in our operating budget.
So we're gonna go across all departments, is what?
But that's, but there's a lot of stuff in every department that could, that could, that could fall into that.
I agree.
We have pool furniture and an equipment fund.
That's MDD funds that.
I know, but
Same thing.
MDD funds all the parks and rec ones. We pull it out, no, it's just because technically, you know, we, yeah, the theory is, is that you don't want to tie up your operational revenues that year on something that's not recurring, or is not gonna be something that you have to spend, but you can, at the end of it, you go, hey, we have this big budget surplus we're anticipating, we're just gonna throw it into there, that's fine, but I think it's, you have to evaluate your whole operating costs before you look at those items, that's really how it needs to be looked at, and if you, if you're coming to a year and your revenues are down, and you say, hey, we don't have enough of a buffer, but we have all this unencumbered available cash, we can use that to fund these, these purchases as well, it's really just finding the funding mechanism, or we can set it up on a schedule somehow, and when we come to you with the budget surplus from last year, and we say, hey, there was, what was it, like 800,000 or some, or 1.1, we can say, hey, that 1.1, do you want to throw this much into equipment replacement to cover three years, you know, or we can cover, even throw some of it into, and we can create the Tahos a lineup and equipment replacement, and we can keep just funding it that way as well, so it's like a, you know, using, using our cash effectively, and then And then with the equipment replacement money, we can throw that into an investment, you know, and then we can let it generate some interest as well right now with the higher interest rates.
Well, and that's another discussion, we started this sort of last year with equipment replacement. If, if we're kind of going this way, do, do we want to do equipment replacement or do we just want to talk about all of these purchases every time we, you know, we want to do a street sweeper? Well, let's look at our budget and see if we have enough money to, to write a check for a sweet, street sweeper. Or do we do equipment replacement at all? I mean, this is, this is a, a change, not, not a bad change, and, and some of it's, some of it makes sense and, and, and some of it's, I think, more verbiage. But does equipment replacement make sense if we're going to turn around every year and talk about, do we make these purchases? Does that make sense? Like, do, do we just throw it all, all this extra money in the bank and at this meeting every year, we decide where we're spending it?
No, we'll, we'll replace things based on the schedule, it's just figuring out how you want to fund that schedule.
But do you, do you want to fund that annually as equipment replacement earmarking that money, putting it aside? Or if, if we're going this route where we're not technically purchasing anything in our budget, literally at every, at every budget meeting, you make the decision about what big items you're going to purchase?
The idea of the equipment placement fund is that it commits it, so that's why you're committing it, but you can commit available cash. It doesn't have to come from your operating reserves. That's, so you're just committed in, that's all it's doing, yeah.
And I said, I, I agree with the operating reserves not including these things.
Yeah.
My question though is, if we're going to go this route, and there's some logic in doing that, does equipment replacement make sense at this point? Do we take annual dollars earmarked to something that's going, that may or may not happen ten years from now? I mean, that's equipment replacement, so if we're going to replace a seventy thousand dollar vehicle, we're going to put seven thousand dollars in it for ten years, we're putting it off to the side and we're sort of saying that money we're not going to use for anything except for replacing that vehicle. Well, if we're not going to make that decision every year, I mean, if we're not going to make that decision except at a budget meeting if we're going to purchase a particular vehicle,
No, no.
doesn't make sense to encumber those funds?
No, Joseph can come to you anytime during the year and say, hey, I have this money in this fund, I'm going to buy this truck, that's fine.
Why do we have a separate fund if we're just, if, if we're not going to make?
Cause you're earmarking it so that you have a plan, it's a capital improvement plan basically, it's a capital purchase plan. So you have a CIP.
But we could do the same thing with the Tahos every year. If we're, historically, we've purchased two Tahos every year.
Yeah.
So if we were going to do equipment replacement, we would have to budget a hundred and eighty thousand dollars every year for equipment replacement for Tahos.
So a good point, so if you depreciate a bunch of years.
I mean, to me, you, you, you either wipe away all this equipment replacement and we, and we do it, or you budget equipment replacement for the Tahos too.
We can't, it's up to you guys how you want to do it. Because that's why I was saying, we, we bring you like, hey, here's what you have for cash, what do you want to throw into the fund for these things? That's what I'm trying to tell, that's what I was going for. After we figure out what we want to do, add to our operating budget. Cause at the end of the day, the, the Tahos are two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two full-time cops are two hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, so why would you want to restrict your operating reserves revenues? Because your recurring expenses have to net against your recurring revenues, you know, so you always have to balance.
That, that's a fair policy, I'm just saying, to me, to me, you either go, you either go all the way.
So that's my theory. Yeah, and we can set it up and have.
And you eliminate all that, or, and, and, and I, I do see the logic in talking about operating expenses, particularly when it comes to what our, you know, our six month reserve, we want, that's only going to be operating, that's what it takes to pay our salaries, keep our doors open, honor our contracts, right? If we're under those emergency circumstances, we're not purchasing new stuff.
Exactly, and they're, we're going to do pay freeze and stuff like that to accommodate.
But I don't think we need to equipment replacement or as an annual expense against a future purchase. That's equipment replacement, it's an annual expense against a future purchase. So if we're not going to do, if we're not going to budget annually, if we're not going to agree that every year we're budgeting that, because right now in our budgets, that's, or historically in our budgets, that's what we've done. Joseph's had some line items.
We're still contributing each year, we're just trying to figure out how you want to fund that contribution.
Okay.
Yeah.
My point is you stop funding it and you, you stop funding it out of your, unless you create a separate line. And you just put it all in the bank and you say, which one of these items do you want to buy this year? This is the amount of cash you have, and do you want to buy a truck this year? Well, the truck can last another year, okay, we're not going to buy a truck this year. Do you want to buy the street sweeper? Well, the street sweeper's got three years left on it. And why are we encumbering expenses, annually encumbering expenses, that we're going to have to make a decision on a big purchase later anyway?
I don't know if we're on the same, it's just basically a committed fund. So you're committing those funds, that's all you're doing with equipment replacement. The operating funding has no aspect into it.
I, I understand, that's why I use the term annual expenditure, right? But we're going to do the same thing, what, what the Tahos are going to turn into is basically an equipment replacement charge, right?
Or you just bring it as a one-time purchase this year.
Or you bring it as every year as a one-time purchase?
Yeah, which it used to be back in the.
Yeah, it did used to be that, but the, in the same vein, all of these other purchases can be done the same way.
They have a longer life value. Well, not all of them, because some of Troy's equipment and vests are different, because they are, they, they scheduled them out and they're as needed. So if a guy, you know, someone stays or goes out, that money's there, we can just spend it. So there are bigger items, but there's also smaller items that are pricier and we buy when they go out, like the radios, stuff like that. So that's where you're kind of, it's equipment, so it's not just vehicles and larger equipment, it's smaller stuff as well. So it's kind of a, it's got two factors going there. At the end of the day, you can still earmark it, it keeps it a little bit cleaner, so you know, hey, we earmarked this already, we don't have to, you know, we don't have to consider, okay, are we going to buy A or are we going to buy B? The Tahos are a weird situation, the price increase is something I don't think any of us saw coming, unfortunately. Just the, the outfit on them are outrageous. So, you know.
It's putting up more than the cars.
That's why I was like, those need to be pulled from operating because they're eating so much into your revenue that could be used for better items. Recurring staff, you know, more police on the street, stuff like that, so that's why.
We can put police on the street unless we have vehicles for them, but. Let's be serious.
They have a fleet, they have a healthy fleet, it's just replacing them so they don't age. So the Tahos, you know, technically a capital purchase, it shouldn't be in your operating budget and that's just, yeah.
And, and I'm.
Talking about where the money is going to be.
That's what I'm just saying, we should have a finer funding mechanism.
All of these items and equipment replacement, I mean, all the ones that you listed. I recognize we have, I think, police radios, police tasers, we also have small, small vests, those are also refreshed on a, on a, a basis as needed. But these are certainly all, would all classify as under the same capital purchase and with, with, with many years of life expectancy, actually more of a capital purchase than, than even the Tahos. Although Tahos age, we just have that many of them that, what do we get, what do we say, five, five years, seven years? What do we get out of Tahos, about seven? By the time you wrote, we talked the other day about the time you rotate them through.
Right, yes, we have, we still have a.
We got some sixteens?
We, we have fifteens, we have a bunch of fifteens, yes, we still have fourteen.
So they, they stay with us, they get moved around.
Yes.
And we don't get rid of them until they're seven, eight years old. But I guess my, again, my point is all this stuff becomes discretionary capital expenditures at whatever year you decide to make the expenditure. Do we need equipment replacement?
I would prefer it because it keeps a stakehold on it and it's committed, so someone can't come in later and say, hey, we're not buying anything. It's committed, it needs a council action, it needs a majority vote for them to release that.
Right, so we would need council action to release it, but we need council action to spend it anyway.
Yeah, but my thing is, you're, you're earmarking your funds, it's basically creating a savings account, that's what it is.
Should we do the same thing with the Tahos though, should we create a savings account?
I said we can do that, we can look at the, so I can come to you every year and say, here's all your funds, you know, so when we do that, designate to gen, general fund surplus. You know, I mean, to the one eighty, sorry, surplus reserve. When we designate that increase to the reserves, we usually take it from last year's budget surplus. So we can look at that and say, hey, this is what you got to play with, how do you want to? And, and lots of cities do that with capital improvement, they actually have a capital improvement fund.
You take your surplus, move it to capital improvement.
That, they'll say, okay, so our surplus, you know, X amount percent is going to go to police department projects, X amount percent will go to public works, and they keep a hold on it. Or if they have a CIP like we do, we could say, okay, so the surplus from this year is going to pay for whatever, you know, in the capital improvement fund. You just basically are using your unencumbered available cash for a benefit and a purpose, so it's just not sitting there. But because it is earmarked, you can still invest it and it still can accumulate interest, so it helps off also that way. Cause other than the hundred and eighty day reserve, we have, I think it was about four point six, that's unencumbered. So, you know, instead of trying to net against operating costs and say, hey, yeah, we can't fund this one this year.
I know, it, what we don't want to do is be using our, our savings to pay for, our, our unencumbered savings to pay for operating expenses. That's, that's our big argument.
Well, you, you, technically, it's, it's very frowned upon.
Right.
You should always net against your operating reserves that year.
Right.
Your operating expenditures.
So I think what I'm hearing is we want to have an equipment replacement fund for Tahos.
We can add a line within, yeah.
So I, I, yeah.
Cause they all have a claim.
To me, it's, it's all, it's, it's everything or nothing.
Yeah, that's fine, and that's why I was like, just let me know what you want to do with how you want to fund it. I just don't, I'm not going to include it in the operating budget ever, you know, how it has been.
I still think you need, whenever we get to like that, that four hundred and eighty something thousand, you still need to line other, you know, expected or anticipated contribution to equipment replacement, so that what we're seeing is what comes after that.
Well, technically, you won't hit, I think you need to do through your operating first and then allocate that.
Yeah, I agree.
You gotta see where your operating surplus is before you even commit to the equipment replacement, because that should use another alternate funding source if you're coming close to bellowing out basically. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get there, we'll, we'll put this here and then we'll go through the staff pay, pay scale, look at that and then we'll come back to this. But I just wanted to give you the, the idea behind it because there's a lot of things, we've, we've, we've fixed a lot of things in our budget that were not done correctly. And these are one of the few things that are kind of outstanding and they're technically, I called other cities and they kind of handle it the same way that I was proposing. They use budget surplus to designate, you know, funds, the whole thing. So we'll come back to that. Do there any other questions about Tahos?
So you don't need to do a deduct on our revenue yet?
No.
She's going to do that after stuff.
Yes, but just to give you a heads up, the, there was three Tahos asked for this year and then the equipment placement funds are also there. So, okay, so next, the next section would be operating changes. So this, I know that we talk about this every year and I know everyone has different opinions and I'm not trying to sway anyone anyway. I'm just giving you the information. As a finance director, I have to kind of make sure that we're staying safe with our revenues. So our, our utility billing, credit cards have been going up, you know, especially when we have drier months and the bills are larger, obviously the sales are larger, so the multiplier with the interchange fees go up as well. I am waiting on OpenEdge to get me a report, not OpenEdge, Incode, they were making me a report to show me on the credit cards, how many are commercial entities are paying by commercial and how many are regular business. The issue is that when I looked at my credit card fee schedule that came, like in my last statement, a lot of the fees that we're paying are on business reward cards, so I'm assuming most of them are business accounts that are paying via credit card and driving up those multipliers. So I did call, so you'll see in this chart right here, there are, when you, when you're dealt credit cards, there's two forms of payment. There's the e-commerce payments, which go through our online site, and then the point of sale payments, which are at the front desk.
What's an example of e-comm?
Through the portal, so if they use a credit card on our municipal payment site, that's our e-commerce payment. The P O S, the point of sale payments are going to be up with Abby and Jen up front. So when they pay on that EMV reader. So with the e-comm payments, there is a dollar twenty-five insight fee that's charged automatically, even if it declines or if they put up their credit card number wrong, and we eat that charge, that's Incode's charge. The, and then there is the interchange and all the other fees that go on to it that are, that are charged by the processor. So like last month, June, I mean, uh, July, we had a net sales on our e-comm of a hundred and seven thousand dollars paid and we paid about five, fifty-six hundred fees. So you're paying substantial fees. And the biggest issue I have is that we do have a larger commercial property that asks if they can pay by credit card if there was a fee. I can't discriminate, I called the P U C, they said, there's not a whole lot of rules with credit card fees. They, all they require is you approve it by ordinance and it has to be easily, you can't overcharge. So you would have to figure out what your cost is and you use that to charge. So like, on average, most cities do about three to five percent. So if I did ten percent, yeah, the P U C is probably going to call me, right? So I did ask Incode, I'm waiting on a callback on them as well, is if there's a way that we could restrict the amount. So is there a way that you can metric on the payment site that says if the bill exceeds a thousand, you can't pay with a credit card? Cause then you're not penalizing your, your, your lower users, but you're not allowing your higher users to use credit card. I'm still waiting on an answer, so I'm hoping to have that by the next meeting.
Personally, I'm not interested in a tiered system. Conroe doesn't do it, Oakridge doesn't do it, it's costing water and sewer forty-nine thousand dollars a year. I can do any one of five different water and sewer projects scheduled for this coming twenty-four year, the amount that we're paying for credit card fees.
So, so Conroe doesn't pay for trash, neither does Oakridge, so does that mean we're going to stop paying for trash?
One day that could be possible.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that for, in this case, everybody in Shenandoah benefits.
I think there's other ideas that we could look to step out and, and look outside of the box other than just saying, we're not going to do this or we're not going to do that. So question for you is, is there a way to add a cost? So if you're paying by credit card, or better yet, if you pay by cash or set up an ACH that you get a five percent discount and if you don't, then it's cost five percent. So you get a cash discount or you pay?
Yeah, so we allow that for the ACHs, we do it, I have to ask Tammy, I can't remember what the amount is.
I think it's a dollar.
Yeah, and we can look at that again, it was just kind of.
Maybe we need to increase that.
I am talking with Incode and Stellar Bank are talking right now to possibly do an E-check option on the portal. It's just trying to figure out gateways at this point, it's, you know, it's all tech stuff. So they're talking, I'm not involved in that whole conversation, but, because that's another option, because that wouldn't cost as much, it would cost us probably equivalency of like an ACH, like I think it's about twenty-five, thirty cents per transaction. So there's ways to look at that. Yeah, I didn't want to penalize our lower users.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a whole hit, you know, it's the bigger commercial, like the hotels, so they have some hotels that pay by credit, you know.
I mean, you have somebody that has a twenty thousand dollar water bill and they're paying on a American Express.
And that's what we need to really focus on and control and that's why I'm looking at different options.
Rewards card, you're paying five percent.
Oh, it's a lot, yeah. So, and when I look at the bills, it tells me by each card type. So it's pretty interesting, a lot of it is business cards, which, you know, they could be residential as well using that if they have a small business.
Well, probably not on a twenty thousand dollar one.
No, probably like a dollar bill.
Go check that out.
So. The, the red flag really was when I had that one commercial property call me. I said, we need to really evaluate this because it's going to be a pretty hefty bill. So there are some options, I, you know, I think the limit one, that's what I've noticed most cities do at this point. Other, smaller cities like us, I, I reached out to G F O A, no one really got back to me. We're all in budget madness right now, so it's been fun. But that's kind of where we're going with this, I, I'm going to have some, I'm hoping by the time we meet next meeting, I have those information concrete. It's a lot of talking to Incode, our bank, our, our credit card processor, what we can and cannot do. The P U C basically said, as long as you're not discriminating and as long as it's not extravagant and just approved by an ordinance if you are going to impose a fee or any kind of restriction, so that it's transparent and if anyone complains about it, they can pull up the ordinance and say, nope, it's in the ordinance, you know? It keeps the city safe and it keeps the P U C kind of in compliance with what we're trying to do. So that's where we're aiming for, it, it's, it's a lot of money, you know, it does affect, that could be an operator, you know, a part of an operator or it could be in projects for Joseph or meters or.
Every one of five projects this year.
It could be some meter replacement, so it is a very large chunk of money and that's why I really wanted to bring it to your attention this year.
Was it forty thousand dollars? Forty-nine.
So, yes, so last year, last year we spent forty-nine thousand in insight and credit card interchange fees. This year to date, I'm still, what, three months, we're up to fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand. And I still have, and we've had high usage months, so it's going to be another big hit probably in the next few months. Um, and then I projected for next year, I put sixty thousand in the budget to cover everything.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you chasing that down. I would be a big fan of the upper limit if we could do that.
We'll look at, yeah, it's, it's really system requirements. We have to just figure out.
I would also ask you to talk, maybe look at another, I know InCode's got deals and, and all the Tyler stuff, but are there other processors who would give us a better, a better rate? Cause that's kind of weird to me, the dollar twenty-five regardless of the sample.
Uh, change, it changes based on.
InCode charges that dollar twenty-five.
Oh, it's InCode that charges it, okay.
And it changes on what type of card they actually.
Uh, uh, no, I agree. I, I was talking about the dollar twenty-five.
That's InCode.
That's InCode, okay. So if there's, if there's other options, cause that, that's a particularly weird one to me because.
Yeah.
Cause we're talking about convenience fees.
Yes, and that's, and, you know, Jamie comes in every month and lets me know. You know how many times we had? Um, and, um, so that's InCode. Um, the pro, InCode's also, they only allow two, um, gateways, which is OpenEdge, which we have, and it's another one, I can't remember what they called it. But they're working with Stellar Bank right now to try to get an E-bank, uh, E, um, E-check option set up. So that would be another benefit, cause a lot of people don't like to do the auto drafts because they like to control what funds they're paying from.
Come on, you even talked me into it this year.
What accounts. I know, and a lot of people that we talked to, they say, well, we have several accounts and we fluctuate what pays what sometimes. And that's why I don't like to do the auto draft and, um.
I like, I like Ted's idea of, of, of we can do the carrot and the stick at the same time.
Yes.
And, you know, incentivize the cash.
Yeah, we can look at that as well.
And at the same time, you need to pay, pay your own fees.
Yeah, we've got four ways to pay free. Credit card isn't one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look at it.
And again, we want water and sewer standing on its own. We've said that before here. That's forty-nine thousand dollars for water and sewer that they won't have to do to come for us for a rate increase. Everybody benefits, not just people who use credit cards.
So keep up the good work and let us know as we go. At this point.
No, you're good.
Uh, at this point, that's what we're gonna do.
I just have to make it, you know, it's my job to be like, hey, this is gonna be an issue.
I did like it, I did like it.
I don't think the forty-nine.
Goal is here.
Yeah.
I don't think the forty-nine thousand is gonna increase our water rates, right?
Well, it's two hundred and fifty over five years, so it adds up.
Okay, so we will, I'll have, once I get that documentation, I'll probably send you guys an email, giving you all the information so that you have it before the next meeting and then we'll talk about it in the next meeting. Um, so we'll move on to personnel items. Um, so, you know, we have met individually with a lot of you to talk about, um, some pay scale adjustments and also some new positions. We'll start off with the pay, uh, scale adjustments, um, with the police department. Um, basically, it's, it's very similar to the discussion we had before. Um, agencies are inflating their salaries, you know, we're having to compete with them for recruits and also, um, for retention. So, um, Troy went back. He went and talked to all the agencies in our area, um, and some other agencies and got their pay scales and what they were proposing to their councils this upcoming budget year. So we were below the curve and we knew that. Um, we had a couple applicants that did pass on us to go to another agency. So we basically, um, he reworked his payroll scale. Um, we looked at it, um, and it was only to affect the P D one and the P D U scales. And the P D one scales are your patrol scales and your P D two scales are your sergeant scales. Because those are your boots-on-the-ground kind of guys. So we want to make sure that that's your, those are the guys that are out there. So we need to make sure that we're keeping them and we're also able to recruit new, if we add staff or if we do have someone that leaves. So I did rework the numbers, um, because of some of the changes within the P D personnel. Um, so the budget impact totally weighted with the salaries and wages, retirement and the, um, taxes is about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. It was a, I, I originally had a hundred and sixteen, so it went down a little bit. Um, so that's totally weighted. Um, and I'll let Troy kind of take lead on that, if there's any questions or conversations about it.
Per person, then?
No. That's total. So it's gonna be your.
Yes. Just per person. No, I'm kidding. No, 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 sure.
I was like, I'm going to the academy tomorrow.
No, you're not.
Um, so yeah, so that's the total budget impact. It's not as much as it was probably when, the last time we did it, because we had a fake catch-up because of our scales being old, plus inflation, plus everything else that happened in that madness year. So, um, it's not as much, but it is a significant amount, but it's to help recruit mostly.
The scale is a three percent bump every year anyway, right?
No, so Troy bases his on a dollar and, um, civilian side does a three percent. Troy had structured his, um, to do a straight, uh, straight dollar each year. Um, and I cannot remember why.
That's to reduce the impact overall. So again, uh, like I said before, it is to make it more palatable. So I, I know that that overall increase, cause if you increase the, the whole budget at three percent across the board, I mean, that, that's gonna be a huge impact. So having that just dollar figure, even though the, the, the percentage increase goes down as you, uh, go up the scale, it, it reduces the amount of overall cost.
So is that scale in here?
I can pull it up, though.
I'm just, what, what is the?
Well, it increases the scale in the beginning, but it reduces it later.
I thought, I thought that you had the scale.
Just by a fraction of a.
Oh, not the scale, scale.
A little bit. So, so it's, it starts out at three percent and then over time, it just goes down a little bit. But it's, it stays consistent with the number value. You like seventeen twenty-five for patrol, that's what you're gonna get every year, seventeen twenty-five.
I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the, uh, scale increase knocked off against the four oh eight and see what we got.
Oh.
Say, say that again, Ron, I didn't hear.
I'd like to see the one eleven six oh two knocked off against the four oh eight and see what we've got.
I don't, I guess.
On the summary change.
On the summaries, on the summary change. So we can see what we have left.
So three seventy-one?
Three seventy-one?
Any other questions about the P D scale?
Being able to pay.
We're not making that.
Being able to pay for is the big part, so.
So, yeah.
So the starting salary is, is, uh, gonna be bigger than, uh, all our other police departments around here?
It's unknown right now because I, I didn't, I wasn't able to get everybody's, what they're proposing this year. Uh, there's a few agencies, I'm not gonna mention their agencies, but there's a few local agencies that, we discussed it and, and they told me what they were gonna, um, they're proposing and from what I understand, that they're gonna get it. So, uh, that was significantly over what we're making now. So that's the reason for the increase, along with all these other agencies out there that are paying seventy-seven thousand and stuff. It, it's hard to compete with that. So we have to do everything we can, especially locally, because that's what we're gonna get. We're gonna get the people that live locally, um, to come apply. We had nine people apply, um, we had zero show up. So we have to do what we can. And I feel like this will be a significant, uh, assistance. It'll be one impact of many variables that'll help us with recruiting.
Did we have anybody follow up on the nine that didn't show as to why?
Um, yes, I haven't got that information yet, but, uh, typically, we, we follow up on that.
You called them in advance of the test too, right?
Yes, they were, they were contacted. There was another agency that was having a test at the same day.
Biscuit.
So that's, that hurts.
We suspect that it's, it's because of a salary.
It, that, that is.
Starting salary.
That is one aspect of it, one aspect of it. There's multiple aspects of it, but that's a big aspect. You know, the other aspect is that there's not movement, so.
Who else had a test on the same day?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Who else had a test on the same day?
It was Montgomery County.
But also the other, some of the other, uh, departments are allowing, uh, our police, uh, officers to take their cars home, which we don't.
Right.
Is that a factor in this?
Uh, that is a contributing factor as well.
Well, it's a little different for us because.
Yeah.
Majority of our police officers don't reside in, uh, within the city, whereas if they go to the county, they're still in the county, so they're still in their jurisdiction.
But it's still, if I'm looking for a job, if I've got a car and I can drive home, that's worth to me, when I was on the street, it's about fifteen thousand dollars a year, probably twenty now.
And then.
But the, the, the main of, of objective of having a take-home car is to increase the presence of a police car within the, the jurisdiction. And that would work for us. Uh, you know, that's, that's not very effective as far as, it would benefit the police officer.
Yeah, it'd benefit recruiting.
Get ninety-one K a car.
We, we'd have to buy more cars.
Well, you'd have to buy, yeah.
It's not like it was when we paid, you know, a bit less.
I'm just saying, if the other police departments are doing that and we're not, we're at a competitive disadvantage, especially if our salaries are too low to begin with. When I moved to Shenandoah, our police department, I was always told was the highest paid in the whole area. And that's why we had the best police department, I thought. That's what I've been led to believe and I learned, I'd heard that it had gone down over the years in the prior administration before you guys got here. You know, they had really cut back on the police department compensation so that they were not competitive with everybody else, because they, uh, could cut it there.
Well, if you don't give raises to people for four years, you're gonna be uncompetitive.
Six years.
Six years, there you go.
Uh, other cities, other agencies have caught up to us. We used to be the, you know.
We used to be the, well, we're still the premium as far as quality, but we're not the premium as far as compensation.
We're also not suffering a lot of attrition either.
People get here, they stay.
Well.
Sure.
Well, in the next, in the next three years, we're not, we're gonna have that problem.
So.
Yeah.
I can say something to that. We don't want to wait till it's a problem.
No.
Cause once we, once it becomes a problem, then, then we're too late. We're behind April.
You're not gonna catch up to.
So, but, no, we are gonna have a big turnover rate in the next three, five years. So it's, it's trying to look down the road and that's why I sit down with, uh, Lieutenant Reivers a lot. We discuss a lot of stuff and we discuss future, we discuss, uh, plans for people, where they're going. And it's, you know, looking down the road. And that's why I came up with this. That's why, you know, looking forward to this. Cause I know, I see what's happening. I see what's going on. Also see the slowdown too with some of these agencies. They can't continue to increase like they've been the last two, three years. They can't do that.
Especially with the county having a revenue shortfall in Conroe.
So, but I think this will put us in a, in a very decent position.
There's no doubt that we need to do something about the, 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 the problem. I hate to call it a problem, but, but, uh, we need to do something about that because looking down the road, we are gonna face some, some difficulties.
Yes.
Today's question is the scale and, and then the additional officers.
So we need to address the scale, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So let's attend to those.
Okay, so moving on to the next.
Any more questions?
I was gonna hit, um, all the scales.
Yeah, the Josephs, yeah, okay.
Um, so also, when we met with you guys, we talked about the pay scale adjustments for, um, continuing the discussion about boots-on-the-ground, our field service representatives. Um, and that includes, you know, the F S Rs and the team lead, who's Ricardo. Um, they're, it's a hard job and Joseph also has a hard time with, uh, with recruitment. Because especially with the private sector, um, you can work at Chick-fil-A or in the air conditioning and make almost the same or make more than the guys out there in the heat. And, and also our field service representatives are not just picking up trash. They are doing meters. They do, um, very skilled labor as well. Um, so it's not just, you know, some cities, they just pick up trash and they mow grass, you know, it, they're doing a lot. So, uh, we wanted to look at that scale as well and try to get it. And we also have older staff in that department that will be retiring, um, kind of how Troy's having that situation as well, um, to recruit younger. So with the field service representatives, there are, um, it's split between water sewer and general fund because they do multi-operations. Um, so we split them instead of having to do a transfer record. Um, so the budget impact, um, to the general fund for that, totally weighted would be about eleven thousand and then for the water sewer, about eight thousand. So those, they are on the lower scale, um, hourly scale, so it wasn't a huge jump per hour, but it does help get them competitive.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry.
No worries. You'll get it on the big, you'll get it on the big board. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, it's all right. I didn't have much. It's been a long day. Yeah, it's all right. I didn't have much. It's been a long day. So.
And I didn't even bug you today.
I know. So, um, and I'll, I'll adjust the water sewer when we get to that scale. Um, and then the third one is gonna be pool operators. So once again, Woody is getting older, should probably be, um.
What are you trying to say? What are you trying to say?
Um, and.
Woody's getting older.
We're just getting to that situation that we're having to try to, you know, fill positions eventually. So, but also, they do a lot of work over there. The pool is the beast.
Is this like, is this just Woody then, or?
It's Woody and Suzie.
Right.
Um, they're, you know, um, it's pretty interesting over there. Uh, and then they're managing a bunch of high school, college lifeguards as well. So.
Okay, they deserve it.
And, and the idea is to expand. I mean, I think that's part of it. I think we need to talk about Joseph from the US.
That'll be the second part, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna be expanding their role.
So this is just to increase that scale they're on and it's only like a two thousand dollar budget, um, impact, you know, just to get them up a little bit.
And the, the pool operators on the same scale, the age-two scales of field service reps.
Yeah.
The age-one scales for the assistant pool operator. Just wanted to keep that. Didn't want it to fall behind with the other hourly positions that we're requesting.
Yes.
An increase to.
I, I think that's totally reasonable.
So that's that. Um, and then we'll move on to the fun part, the actual employee additions.
So my deduct's already in there then? What's the, what's?
I'm looking on it.
Okay. I can't read, I can't read the number, I'm sorry.
I was trying to talk and do it together.
I know.
So that.
Take your time.
So that we can, I would like to go home tonight.
It's only eight o'clock.
Feels like it's still eleven. Uh, so, sorry, what was it, nineteen? Right. So moving on, employee additions. Um, so Troy has, and I did give you a copy of his, uh, memo as well, if you want to read through it. I did summarize it on the budget document and the items of consideration. Um, so, uh, the police department is asking for two, um, additional patrol officers. Um, this will fully staff three of their four shifts. Um, there is an additional officer that will be requested next year. So when I did the whole weighted average, um, of each officer, um, it brings them, and I also did it on the scale, the third scale, the third step to keep it, um, so if we hire, there's a little bit of flexibility there. It brings each cop, um, each officer would be about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and then when you multiply that by two, it's about two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars total. And that includes their salaries and wages, which is their night's payment and holiday pay is included in that number. Um, that's why it looks like the seventy-one's a little high. It's because it includes that night's payment and their holiday pay. Retirement, um, taxes, unemployment, insurance. I did it at the max rate of the medical for the family. And then, uh, intermediate peace officer cert and then education pay of associates, just to have it kind of there in case it's needed. Um, it's not a huge budget impact, but it's there, so.
The likelihood is it would actually be a little less than the, we want to be.
I wanted to have enough, yeah. And, and also with hiring, you're gonna have some months of vacancy and then, you know, it's not gonna be October one, someone, you know, we might, but.
We still have one.
One vacancy.
Two holes for a place already?
One.
One.
One, just to.
We have one right now.
So there's gonna be a little bit of overlap, so there'll be, so, um, but. kinda practice with us is just to expect everything, so, um, but that's about what you're looking for as the budget impact for two new additional officers. Two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Not good.
So, I'll let Troy answer any questions they have.
What does a police officer in Montgomery, City of Montgomery make?
Um, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I know, I know their pay scale was a little bit higher than ours, not by much, but a little bit.
What about for Montgomery County?
Montgomery County makes less than us, but they do have more benefits. They have, you know, movement. Um, I know their certification pay and everything has changed. Um, and then, you know, they have the take-home ride factor. Uh, there, there's multiple factors that-
So they gotta take up- Is this enough, Troy, or do we need to come up with more money somewhere to? And now, we've talked about signing bonuses, and I know nobody likes that. But what else, what other alternatives do we have to fill these positions? You don't wanna, we can't afford-
Yeah, just, just try to-
Really? Is that your suggestion? How much do we need, how much should we throw? I'm on board.
We're, we're, you know, you're, you're looking like I've got X many dollars I can spend right now.
Well, I would do away with automated, I would do away with, uh, credit card, uh, charges. I'd take, give me sixty thousand dollars, pump it into the police department, let him figure out-
It has to stay in water and sewer.
It has to stay in water and sewer.
Oh, okay, well, I thought, what is that, what is that credit card? Forty thousand?
It's for the water sewer, uh, utility building.
Forty-nine for water sewer, yeah.
I, I think that where, where we put it, I think it's good. I think we're, we'll be okay within the county.
What if we can't fill these positions at some point? Can you come back to us with another alternative to?
Well, that would be up to y'all.
Well, we have to look at the possibility of there are some positions that could be civilians that don't have to be a police officer. Not for discussion right now, but that's an option.
And we, we need to also consider retention. We don't wanna lose officers
Correct.
because we're rewarding recruits, you know, we don't wanna lose people we've had.
I'm not against raising everybody there. Everybody, including the Tom.
Well, I, I think we're okay. I really do. I think that this, the sixty-two's is starting out. It's, it's good, it's competitive. I think it puts us very competitive in Montgomery County. Um, we need to advertise the heck out of it. Um, I got with the recruiting and put a plan together and making sure that we get stuff out. Um, and I've got a deadline put out in October, so we're, we're, we're gonna do it. Um, so, it's just putting it out there, making, letting everybody see it, letting everybody see our benefits. Um, and then doing what we can to be creative as far as, um, you know, just showing, I think the K-nines could be, uh, a help with the recruiting.
How, how do you figure that?
Because we've had multiple people call us, uh, in the past and, and ask us if we had K-nine program. Uh, that's, that's, so that's part of it. When you only have patrol, and that's all you have, you're not gonna get that many people coming in. Because they want something else to do. They don't wanna stay their whole career on patrol. Why would they wanna do that? That's because your, your burnout is twelve to fifteen years. I personally can tell you that. Your burnout's twelve to fifteen years as a police officer. This, this is not, this is not, unfortunately, it's not the town it used to be. This is a town now that the guys are busy, y'all see that. I've been, I've been showing y'all that. The guys are, are getting after it, they're getting into stuff all the time, like no time ever before, so.
No question.
Yeah, so, but with that, we, we have to understand that you, you, these guys burn out, they get tired. Um, right now, we're shorthanded. We're, we're three people down. So, they're, they're getting burned out. So, when you have people that are on for ten, twelve years, they want someplace to go, they want something else to do. And if you tell them that that's all they're gonna be for their whole career, they're not gonna stay. They're either not gonna stay, or they're gonna find some place else to go, or they're not gonna come here. So, there has to be something to, to draw them in, to know that, hey, I, I have an opportunity that I can move here. I can get to this spot, I can get to that spot. Whether, whatever position that is within the agency, if we have those positions, that opens up more avenues for those officers to go into. Because morale is my biggest problem. That, that is my biggest thing, I, I said that from the very beginning. Morale is my biggest obstacle to overcome with officers, is to keep up the morale. And how do I keep up that morale? That's why we haven't had people leave, like in other agencies. Because the way we run our police department and, and the things that we try to do. Now, trying to draw people here and let them see what we do, that's another thing. So we have to get that word out and let people see what we do. But that's part of it, is having alternative things to go into outside of patrol.
There you go. And I, and you and I talked the other day, but I think that's, that's the important thing, is when an officer's applying, they go, there are other things that I can do here. And we talked, I don't know if you wanna talk about the, the other program yet, if you wanna talk about that or not, but, um, I'm just saying, we've got K-nine now, we've got this other program, and if you feel, if you wanna talk about that, that's fine.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're talking about, uh, getting some drones and doing a drone program. Uh, everybody we've talked to with the drones is just, you know, they're, they're talking it up pretty big. Um, now, it's not something that would be just a sole position, but it's something to do. Uh, it's, it's, it's more training to go through, more experience to go through, something that's just not monotonous. It, it's something that pulls them off and, and allows them to do something different.
And so if they come to Shenandoah, they can, they're applying to Shenandoah, they're saying, oh, this, this is a small agency, you know, everybody thinks about it as a small town, like you said, we're much more, which is much more than that. But this small agency has K-nine, it has drone, and maybe we bring in some other programs so that that's, that's as attractive. Yes, I'm gonna get a nice paycheck, yes, I'm gonna get taken care of by benefits, but there's some other stuff we can do that helps, uh, attract people, and that, you know, so.
Absolutely.
I just, I think that's, that's helpful that we'll continue to think outside just salary, because we can chase the dollar all day long. We're gonna, you can't keep chasing that.
We have to be creative, and we just have to, you know, do, do different things.
Well, I can tell you from private, from personal experience, uh, in, in law enforcement, the, uh, small towns with small departments are, are limited as to what they can offer. Uh, the bigger departments can offer, you know, detectives, they can offer, uh, traffic, they can offer, you know, uh, crime scene technicians. There's a variety of things that people can rotate into that is not your day-to-day routine patrol duty. Uh, and that's the pitfall that comes with having a small, small, well, I say small relatively, you know, speaking, uh, police department, is that, you know, you don't have those incentives. Like, hey, I wanna be a homicide detective, you know, I wanna be, you know, a burglary detective. We don't have that, that, those positions, so.
And we have people that, that are training for positions that we have in the admin. We have people that are training for those spots, because they know what's coming in the next three to five years. So, they're getting ready for that.
That was my, my next question. How many, uh, potential retirees do you have?
Uh, approximately five within the next three to five years.
Three to five years?
If not more.
So Chief, currently your budget is, is presented as, is three million, forty-three thousand dollars. So if we add these two figures together, it brings it to three million, eight hundred and nine. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Are we all good with that?
Not necessarily. I might only wanna do one. I need to talk about these other positions.
You know, my problem with the whole thing is we really, with all of this, we got revenue, we've got we've earned four hundred thousand surplus of, uh, I just don't know how it all fits. And just to sit here and talk, and this is just me, I'm not talking about, you talk about a hundred and eleven thousand, and then two forty-six, and all, and you take the thousand, put it in, you know, it's just-
Yeah, I see your point, yeah, yeah.
And I'm just saying, I, I need to see these numbers work out, because if I do two, some of these other ones on this page are already dead. Unless he raises taxes.
Water operator.
The last of the water.
Yeah, well, it's a water operator, okay, so.
Yeah, that's, that's different money.
Yeah, that's not gonna affect this.
Yeah.
Well, that's right, he could be getting a credit card fee dollars.
He's got a million dollar surplus, he doesn't need a credit card fee swap. He's gonna pay for it now.
I'm just gonna put it here, so he gets the other text, okay?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead and put it there.
Stick it in there, we'll see what it does.
Okay.
One, one twelve?
So how long does it take you to recruit one officer?
Last year was almost a year to get one.
So that, that's, um, I don't, I think it's within the police officer's culture, okay? Not just Shenandoah. I don't know.
The market.
It just seems pretty hard, if you gotta recruit one guy for a year.
It, it is a nationwide problem, absolutely. Why would you wanna be a police officer right now? With the liability risk, the risk of life? I mean, why would you wanna do it? The divorce rate's atrocious.
I was, uh, on a ride-along with a police officer.
I mean, who wants to be a police officer?
I was on a ride-along with a police officer, uh, last month. Uh, this police officer told me how every day when they kiss their children to go by, to go to work, they say, please, come home tomorrow. And that police officer said it from the heart. Uh, and I'm, and I heard that police officer talking to their children that night. Uh, they put their line, their lives on the line for us every single day. And I'm telling you, it's worth the extra dollars to, to pay the people we have and to recruit the best. And it's a tough job to recruit for. People don't wanna do that. You know, they're getting beat up on, on the national media by everybody because they're in the police department. This, this, these police officers that I've gone with, they're, they're like, their head's like a, a bobble, they're going like this always on, they don't know who's gonna come shoot them, who's gonna come up behind them when they even park, they've gotta look, they've gotta back up to a building that no one can sneak up on them. They really need our support. And I'm telling, if we don't, if we don't have this police department return to the very premium pay, I think, then we would want, we'll, the whole city will go to hell. Safety is number one in this city. We've gotta be able to recruit these people, we've gotta be able to keep them. You got four or five people leaving here in the next few years, we could be in a hell of a situation if we don't get people in now.
Well, that's my point. I mean, it takes a year to recruit one officer, and you have five that are leaving in the next three years.
We're in trouble.
That's five years of recruitment, if you're doing one, one at a time. Even if we're doing two, you're still not... I mean, you, you got approved last year for one officer, the year before for one officer, is it right?
Uh, the year before.
Year before, we got approved for one or two?
One.
One. And last year, we didn't increase it?
No, sir.
And the other issue we have is, is that we're hiring experienced police officers. We're not hiring cadets out of the, out of the academy, right?
Well, we'll take what we can get right now, uh, but we're, we're looking at trying to hire some, some younger guys because we, we do have a lot of veterans. We have a lot of old salty guys. So it's, it's time to get some younger guys to get in.
But the younger ones still have to go through an academy.
They, they, and that's who we, we're, we're looking for. We're looking for people out of the academy, um, you know, first five years or so of service.
We got lucky a couple of years ago, and we picked off a couple cadets, and they're still with us, so they must like it here.
But somebody needs to sponsor them through the academy, right?
We need to do that. We've talked about this before with the predecessor.
You know, that's, that's something we, we could do. We could sponsor something, and of course, y'all would have to approve that, but if, you know, sponsoring somebody through the academy, that's a, that's an option.
Bill could write up an agreement.
They're committed for, let's say, two years, three years.
We'd definitely have to put them on a, you know, top contract that they, yes.
Yeah, Bill could write up something, you know, so that they are latched on with us.
Right, it's a power education.
And once they hear, and once hear they like it, then we're gonna keep them.
Because I, I don't know what the state requirement would be for a, for a, a field training program out of the academy. I know, I, I, we used to have six months where I'd be, where I was a, a field training officer.
Right.
But this is a long time ago.
Right.
You can tell by my hair.
So I-
But, but, in any event, the department sponsored the academy, cadet when he came out, he was dedicated to the department for X number of years.
Right.
And then once he became a, 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 a veteran of some kind, you know, not, I won't say grizzled, but because it takes a while to become a grizzled.
Right.
But, uh, once they became on their own, they went out on their own, and they, they, it was their choice, the, the contract was cut out.
Mm-hmm.
But I think recruiting for, for an academy class is probably the way to go, because there might be some people that are fresh out of college, or fresh out of, you know, uh, out of the military, that would, uh, would rather do something like that.
There, and there's a lot of, uh, agencies that are going that route, just trying to do what they can, uh, sponsoring, sponsoring, uh, a cadet through the academy, and-
Especially, you know, military policemen, they've already been through an academy.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a matter of having the state certify that academy as a, a legitimate, uh, law enforcement, you know, depending on when they went through the academy.
Right.
But, uh, uh, that's another avenue of approach towards the, uh, the problem.
Well, I think it's a combination of all those things. I mean, I'm not telling you how to do your job.
Yeah.
You guys, you guys do your job the way, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
We're just trying to figure out, you know, what kinda, we're just trying to figure out, you know, how much money we need to actually budget for. I mean, i- if we're out three officers right now, and we're still trying to recruit one from two years ago, and we're gonna add two into our budget this year, are we gonna be able to recruit three this year?
It's, it, it's difficult nationwide. It's just, like I said, we have to be creative. Um, we have to keep trying to, to come up with different ideas, but that was a, that was an option, that was something that we discussed, trying to, um, you know, sponsor somebody through an academy. You know, we, we don't want all cadets, but we would like, you know, you have to have a mixture, uh, when it comes to stuff, because you have to have guys that are coming up, that are new and young and, and are full of vinegar and wanna get out there and conquer the world, and then you have to have the veterans to kind of, you know, slow them down a little bit.
It's like, like growing crops.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It's like growing crops.
Yep.
They go through that, that field training, uh, process, and they become the ones with the experience, and they become field training officers.
Right.
And the thing just, just kinda feeds itself.
Absolutely.
I know you're not ready to talk about what that would cost, um, tonight, and that's fine. I would suggest that, that, you know, you and Kathy and Jake and whoever else you need to bring into your circle, maybe bring some of those ideas to us in the coming months and with some costs. Because I know if we sponsor a cadet, there's a cost associated with that. As Lisa is fond of reminding us, we can do budget amendments. Um, and, and I think, but I do think, looking at somebody says, we're officers down, and we're looking at five, and we're only getting one a year, we're gonna have to come up with something creative, and if it means something like that, spend the next couple of months and bring that to us, and, and, you know.
No, I, I-
Feel free to-
I definitely think that that's an option for us, something that, you know, that we can do. Because I, I think it would be good, just trying to find those ones that, uh, would fit within our agency. That takes, takes a while. And that's part of our, our thing too, you know, s- uh, some agencies, they might hire some of the people that we reject, but we're pretty particular about who we are, so.
I'm, I'm in favor of approving this, obviously with, uh, both officers, but with, with the understanding that the likelihood is we're really probably not gonna spend that, all that money.
Well, and that's, that's kinda my point too. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of giving you exactly what you're asking for, but what's the reality of you recruiting three officers this year when we haven't been able to recruit?
Maybe we budget for one, and we-
It's a roll of the dice. I'd like to, if, if we can get two, because I mean, we don't know. I mean, you know, we might have tomorrow- you know, we might have tomorrow, we might do a hiring and then we get two great guys, it's just a, it's a total roll of the dice. But I would like to have that option to have those two because I'm telling you right now, the guys on the street are, they, they would rather have, out of anything out of the budget, they'd rather have help.
Yeah.
Cause they're, they're getting, they're getting hammered right now.
What if, uh, I'm sorry, what if, what if, what if we, you said go ahead, so I'm going ahead.
My bad. I'm tired, go ahead.
So, uh, what if we, uh, approve it as one, if you find two, we do a budget amendment for the second one?
I, I would agree with that, I think that's, that's...
And we, we have conditionally approve that plan, you find two, we'll give you the two, we're gonna budget for one.
Or what I could do is do a budget for two at six months. If it, cause we have one vacancy that will fill in and then then we'll be after that.
He already has one that he's missing.
Just so that it schematically shows the additional, what, twenty-nine staff or whatever.
Correct, the addition of two more.
Correct, so you, you already have one that you're looking for, it's already approved in the budget. So you're asking for two more on top of the one that we're missing.
Correct.
So what I'm saying is, find your one there, find another one, if you find the third one, anytime during the next budget year, then bring it back and we'll do a budget amendment for the third one.
But there's no reason to encumber...
There's no reason to encumber all this money right now when it's taken nine months to recruit an officer and you have three to fill.
Right.
And we haven't done that in two years.
I mean, that's a good plan.
Right, yeah.
I want you to do it.
Right.
And I want you to know you have the support of, you know, I'm not gonna speak yet, you know.
You got my support.
I can speak for the, the whole council, I guess.
You got my support.
You good with that, Ron?
Basically, you'll fund one, but if you hire two, it's, it'll cover...
I'm still, I'm still looking. So four to one, you're gonna have three officers, you're gonna get two right now, you have one already in your budget. We're gonna approve one more, if you find a third one during this budget year, bring it back to the floor.
Right, I, I understand, understand the process and, and I know that, you know, because of the timeline, that money is being held. So why not free it up until you get that person hired?
Correct. So that Ted doesn't have to speak for me, I'm okay as long as we can fit it in under the NNR.
Fit in what?
It, it doesn't matter if it goes under the NNR, so you got a four to one.
Four to one, yeah.
We're not, we're not going there.
Okay, I mean, yeah. All right.
With the increase that you proposed.
Yes.
And that's factored into this?
Yeah.
I did that already. So, okay, so, second employee addition, parks and rec employee, um, so this would basically, um, I don't know, Joseph, do you wanna take the lead or?
I can, um, basically this would be expanding one of our existing positions of the pool operator, um, and the, the idea of, of a, of a parks and rec type employees kinda been batted around by council staff for, for a number of years now. And as we were looking at the numbers of hours that our operators putting in now, just maintenance of the pool itself, uh, it's bumping that threshold of, it's hard to keep it a part-time position. So the idea was, well, why don't we just make one, not both, one of these a full-time position? And during the winter season, when there's not as much demand because the pool's not in full operation all the time, that same position could run programs, um, you know, recreational type programs, tennis tournaments or pickleball tournaments or, you know, little city-sponsored marathons. They could also work as a liaison with civic club, but that person could fill that time in the slower months of the winter, doing those activities. At the same time, they still, they're still in a certified pool operator, um, and a lifeguard, and during the summer, they, they keep the pool going. That way you kinda get...
So are we looking like a parks and rec person that's gonna do after-school programs, things that are gonna engage kids that other park and rec people actually do? Or are we just talking about adding a staff person?
No, that's gonna be adding those programs, you know, we've got the community room that we can use.
So then we still, do you have anything budget for cost for equipment, stuff that they would need? Or are we just talking a staff person?
Right now, just a staff person, this is just to get the idea out there discussed.
So if we don't have equipment for the park and recs person, then what are they actually going to do?
Right, well, obviously, if, if this is something that council wants, that can be taken care of, um.
So I, I, I'm not opposed to a park and recs person, but I think if we're gonna do a park and recs person, we oughta actually have a park and recs program that would also encompass equipment, schedules, things that they're actually gonna be contributing to in our park to engage our kids and hopefully keep them out of trouble that might reduce vandalism in our parks and, you know, engage them more to, you know.
That's our long, our long-term thought.
Well, I understand that, but if we're, we're, why would we approve a park and recs person and not have equipment and a program going and play at the same time, now we're just paying for a staff person to wood? Some of it would be just, I mean, like you said, organizing a pickleball tournament, which wouldn't really require any real cost, but...
They don't seem to have a problem organizing.
Yeah, what else, what else would that involve, right?
Right, I mean, sitting, sitting goodbye.
We have a pickleball court schedule already, so I mean, do we need a forty thousand dollar person to figure out how to schedule that?
What else are we gonna do? So if we're, if we're asking for a parks and recs person, I would like to see a parks and recs program at least proposed with that person and what additional costs are we looking at for that equipment?
Yeah, absolutely, that makes sense. Um, this is just to get the idea out there, cause...
I think it's a great idea.
Um, you know, rather than spend...
I just didn't see the second part.
Right, rather than, cause there, there's lots of programs out there, you know, rather than gathering, you know, hours and hours worth of information, no, we don't want that. I mean, if there's an interest there, then that's, that's information that we can get, for sure.
Well, yeah, but it's gonna be costs involved and, I mean, this is budget workshops, so what are those costs?
I know we were kinda late getting to the details, but I think Ted's got the valid point of program's gonna have costs. Now, some of this may be, it gets pulled from some of the stuff we're doing in the community, is that the case? Or are we gonna create all-new costs? You know, you mentioned marathons, you mentioned some other things, all those things have some cost, even if they're not that expensive, they're still...
Provide water, you know, I mean, there's...
T-shirts.
Do you have, do you have some idea, you know? So maybe, I don't...
Looking for a ballpark number?
I, 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 I don't know, that's, that's, I mean, do you need another, do you need another twenty K, uh, is that?
I, I have...
I don't know, I have to see some programs lined up before I could commit any money.
So what we, we, we can do, cause this would be just to evolve the current assistant pool operator into that position, so she's already on staff. Um, it's not like we're having to go out for applications, so if we can get that before the next meeting and we can disperse it prior to that, give you an idea of kinda what we're looking at. Um, and then even if we approve the budget without proving the full-time position, we can always...
Again, budget amendments, we can bring back...
We can always figure it out after that, but at least we can start working through that, um, that might be a good idea, Joseph. It's, she's on staff, so it's, it's a little bit easier, um, to kind of build it and present it quicker, if that makes sense, okay.
She's, she's on part-time staff, we're gonna come full-time staff.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, so it's not like we have to go out and try to find someone to fill that position, it'll be there, someone's there. It's just, um, getting all that other stuff outlined, bring it to you guys, get it okay, and then we can, either if it's before we approve the budget or if it's after, we'll, we'll work on it.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, it's minimal amount, it's something that Kathy'd be able to sign off on anyway, so I don't think we're looking over fifteen K.
If we increase the salary, I would have to have you guys approve it, yeah.
You're talking about the programs?
The programs, yeah, especially...
Yeah, just get a list of an idea of programs, and, and we've looked at what other cities do, you know, and, but, we can get that together, not a problem.
And, and obviously, this position's not gonna be like the Woodlands Parks and Rec Department, um, or Conrads.
We don't need a park ranger.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be more community oriented and not, you know, bells and whistles, so, uh...
No, that's the whole point of park, a park and rec program is that you actually have somebody that's engaged in the community.
Exactly, so, so that's, so we'll come back with that, um, if we get it prior, we'll send it to an email. Um, I'm gonna get all the information and try to do another memo that explains everything, so it's compact and together. So you're not getting a thousand emails from me. Um, okay, so, um, we'll kinda put that on the table, you know, we'll table that for now, um.
The difference, I think most everybody picked up, we're not, they're not asking for seventy-seven, they're asking for forty-nine.
Yeah, and also, I did...
Right, that's the difference between...
I once again did the max on the insurance, we can look at that as well, um...
Yeah, what's, since we know the person, we should, we should look at what that actually costs.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to her, we'll figure it out, so, okay. Yeah, I know, I just put it in there cause I wasn't sure and rather be safe than sorry. Okay, so, uh, final employee addition will be, um, a water operator, I'll let kinda Joseph take over that one as well.
All right, so this position is, uh, requested, two-part, one, uh, one of our most, um, tenured operators is going to be retiring. Um, so we'd like some time to get a new operator up to speed, um, and, and go in a hundred percent before they leave. Also, our system is growing, uh, we're gonna be adding Tamna, we've already added a water plant. Um, and just talking with the operators and the, the callouts that they're having to do, they were really excited when, when I told them that I was gonna be asking for another operator position just to relieve some of that stress and some of that time that they're called out. And these operators come out at all hours, um, when they get alerts at our treatment plan or the stations. You know, if it's two in the morning, they're out here.
And...
Yeah, they get paid for it, yeah, right. Um, but if you have another operator to spread when you're on call-out, it's just...
Slows the burnout too.
They, they were very excited about it, I'll, I'll just say that much.
So are we asking for an operator that's replacing the one that's retiring, or are we asking for an additional operator on top of the one that's retired?
So this'll be an additional operator, when the other retires, we'd want to replace that position cause that's probably gonna fall about the time when we're, we're really into the Tamna water sewer expansion.
It's a replacement, but it's a lap over.
It'll be an additional operator... We're gonna go one-up headcount.
That we keep, yes.
So we're asking for an additional operator plus replacing the existing one?
Right, when that happens a year from now, so this is a one-up operator position.
I'm okay with that.
Um, when the tenured operator leaves, we'll post for that position.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is necessary again with the Tamna coming online, two more, two more water plants, we gotta have, we gotta, we gotta back up.
And how long does it take to hire one of those guys?
Um, they do have to have certifications, in the past, we've been real lucky and we've had some of our field operators who've gotten the training while they're operators, and so they slotted into that. Uh, right now, I'm looking at a lot of field guys retiring soon, so we're gonna have to look outside, um, of our organization. It's hit or miss, I know there's some other cities where there's, uh, some unrest, I won't name names, but they potentially have some operators looking to move, so, you never know, it's kinda like Chief Dunlap said, roll of the dice. Uh, I think our, our pay is competitive, um, we offer some perks like the on-call pay, I think people will be interested in that.
And you don't think we have any of our field operators or field service guys currently that are looking to step up?
Not right now, no.
You know, I'll add to that, that it took us six months to fill a field service position last year and we had one applicant. So across the board, positions are taking longer to fill. And while we certainly encourage, uh, you know, promoting opportunities, then we create a vacancy somewhere else that we have to deal with.
Yeah, no, it fills one hole but creates another.
Right.
But sometimes it's a smaller, smaller hole to fill.
All right, so, I go?
I'm, I'm good with it.
I'm good with that.
Absolutely.
All right, um, do you want it to be a quick break or do you wanna move on to the next section? These should be pretty quick at this point. Go, okay. So these are gonna be special events and one-time ads, so I just, let's, let's get through the other two first, um, before we talk about the fiftieth year anniversary celebration. So the water sewer, uh, work truck addition, um, for the new, you know, we'll, cause we'll have four operators eventually and also it'll help Joseph enroll, um, cause right now they use the pool car and it ties up for other operations, so, when they go on inspections. And also, a truck's more reasonable when you're going on inspections than the...
So where are we at right now?
Uh, one fifty-seven, one seven-three, one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, so because these are one-time ads or special events, then this has no impact to an NNR?
Yeah.
So we've already met our NNR.
So the fifty-year, that's gonna come out of cash.
Yeah.
And, and water and sewer can definitely cover the price of a truck.
Yeah, water sewer can cover that truck.
But we have, we haven't included any of the, um, other...
Capital?
The...
That's after this, yeah.
Wow, it's the equipment replacement fund stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we, that's...
Yeah, but none of those, none of those will affect the NNR.
They might if we treat it as an annual expense.
If they're, if they're capital improvements or capital projects, it's not gonna impact, it's a one-time purchase. They're not gonna impact the NNR, we've already met our NNR.
Well, yeah, unless you were saying, hey, I wanna use this budget money this year, the operating budget revenues, but you have enough surplus that you're fine, even if you wanted to, yeah, you'll be fine.
That's what I'm saying, if we're talking about purchasing equipment.
Cause General Fund only has, uh, these are starting to go in my head a lot, hundred seventeen thousand eligible.
Correct, but, but that has, but that has to do with your recurring budgeting, if you're doing purchases, capital improvement purchases, that has another effect on your NNR.
Yeah, we're just gonna figure out how we're gonna find...
Cause you can reach an available cash if you need to.
I'm in favor of the water sewer truck, cause it's gonna be out of water and sewer and it's a necessary expense.
We've already met the threshold for the NNR.
Yeah, and so...
Is everybody else okay with the water sewer truck?
Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
Yes.
All right, so, um...
And water sewer fund has more than enough money to pay for it.
Right.
So council requests, um, I did get two, uh, well, one from Ted and then, um, kind of your list that we went through, you, me and Kathy, and we, we already talked, they're more operational based, so we were able to address those. Um, so just go through Jim's, they were, just so that you all know that what he requested was the police department pay scale review, which we had done, um, increases to advertise in which John's working on, um, in- increases to communications, which are the newsletters, which we've added some money to, um, lace and plate readers, um, which we'll talk about tonight, um, uh, on capital, and then the Tahoe order and improvement, which is basically like, because, which I think has been solved with Chevrolet, right? There's not the weird schedule that you have to meet to order at this point. They've kinda, remember the la- the last few years?
Oh, no, there's, there's still delays, but they're not as intent as, as they were.
Basically like find a mechanism so we can fund them earlier if we need to, it's a letter of intent, basically. So we, we already discussed that, so moving on to, uh...
Can I ask, I'm gonna ask you, the, the increased advertising, talking about that local advertising we talked about earlier? Okay, okay, just wanna make sure that was covered.
So, um, council request, um, council member, council member Fletcher had one request, I did put it in, um, with this. Um, I had to copy and paste it onto a second sheet because it did not follow, you know. It, it was with the, uh, I gave you the memos and the nap behind it. So, the second page is just basically the continuation because it didn't print all that communication. So, um, Ted, I don't, do you want me to enter it or do you want to?
So, yes, I could tell you what it's about. Um, so it really falls under quality of life and, and it's a, uh, uh, one-time capital purchase for, uh, a block party tra- uh, trailer. But actually, as we were talking here about developing, uh, a park and rec program, a lot of your equipment's actually involved in that trailer. And so you could probably use both of those for the same, same purpose. But the intent behind it was that, you know, we've had a few requests here, um, for block parties in the past. This is something that, uh, actually I, I saw, uh, brought up, um, on a website, um, here locally and, and I'll, uh, give, uh, credit where credit is due on that. And, uh, and then once I, I saw it brought up, then I went online and started looking at other cities to see if, you know, this was something that was, uh, common and, and up and coming to promote, um, really that neighbor meeting, neighbor... really that neighbor meeting neighbor and neighbors helping neighbor type of philosophy that we carry here in Shenandoah. And I was amazed at how many cities in Texas actually have block party trailers that the cities own that they put out, um, for use for, um, communities within the city that actually wanna do a block party. And so it's kind of a block party in a, a kit, if you would. Um, currently, uh, if we have a block party, they fill out a, uh, a request to do that, to block off the streets. PD goes in and drops off, you know, the, the, um, uh-
Barricade.
Barricades, uh, for the street. The trailer contains all that, not only does it contain the barricades, but it can, it contains safety equipment, it also contains games, barbecues, tables, uh, pretty much everything to conduct, uh, that block party as a, as a whole, um, and promotes, uh, that, that neighborhood. The fifteen thousand one-time is the cost of, of the trailer, all the equipment, basically, um, that would, would go for that block party. Um, the trailer's about, uh, ten grand of that expense, and then about five thousand dollars for all the other, uh, knick-knack, games and tables and coolers and, uh, everything else that, that would go into, um, the trailer would be wrapped with, with, uh, our city logo, of course, and promoting the block party and promoting the fact that, uh, you know, to contact the city for use of the trailer. Um, there, there's really not a cost involved for the trailer for, um, the community to use, um, but like I say, I was surprised that there were probably about a hundred and fifty communities or cities throughout Texas that actually had block party trailers that were available for their community to be able to use and set up a block party for, um, uh, their, their residents, uh, uh, in that area. So, uh, it's just a thought that, that I had that would promote community. Um, but like I say, with all the stuff that's in it, it could also be pulled over to the park and use as park and rec, rec stuff as well. So the budget amount was fifteen thousand.
Do you think that the civic club would get use out of this too? Teddy? I would think-
I think, uh, I think it's a neat sounding idea. I don't know if, if you wanna do it and have it free to anybody who wants to use it, because usually if something is free, it's not taken care of. And, uh, so I would think that we would need a charge factor, maybe with this too.
Or a deposit?
A deposit.
A deposit?
Yeah.
And then my thought is too, Ted, uh, what about getting that trailer somewhere? If they didn't have a truck, then does the city take the trailer to wherever they're-
It could.
Yeah.
Right now, we're delivering barricades, so-
Right.
So, I, I-
So what I'll do-
I mean, our city's only two square miles, I don't think it's that difficult to deliver something.
I, I know, I looked, I saw the posting too, when you did that, and I looked into it too, and I personally don't know any parks and recs people that are using them, so, I don't know, I think it sounds cool.
I think it's a pretty low expen- it's a pretty low expense to give it a shot. We've, we've, we've spent money on experimental things that haven't worked out, um, that were, I mean, that's, that's one, um, street light.
Those solar lights.
So-
As far as the more community.
And this, this- It's a third of a portable bathroom. Right. I mean, you know-
Of course, we never made it available to the public either.
Yeah, uh, so I, for fifteen K, I think let's, let's give it a shot, get some real pricing and, and give it- Right now, I think you have it, the, the proposal would be that the city would deliver it. Um, I think that's fine, we may need to, we may need to figure in twenty-five dollar charge, and we kind of do- Right, some minor little-
Yeah, some deposit.
Um, I do know, when me, Joseph and Jackie were talking about this, Jackie's only concern was just to make sure that they're in compliance with whatever rules there are for trailers being parked on the street as well. Um, so she would have some kind of-
Wait, do we have any rules that are parked on a trailer?
I can't remember what she had brought up.
There's some overnight trailer rules.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, we had a resident that had it parked down the street for months, and there was nothing that we could do about it. So I don't think we have any comp-
Yeah, it was just to put in the rules and regs, probably.
I would have to say, you know, I don't know of a rule or regulation that prohibits a trailer from being parked on the street.
And I don't want to put words in our mouth, but she brought something up and I totally forgot to write it down, and-
It's a city conveyance anyway, so it's-
Yeah, and she, we, but if they're gonna run it through the specific rec, we can have the recs, the rules and regulations in that, uh, area and stuff, so. Sorry, I'm just trying to remember everything Jackie's told me.
Yeah. Well, I just wanna make sure if we're gonna bring something like that up, it's something that we can enforce across the board to everybody, not just-
Well, I don't think we really need to also work the maintenance and the labor authority, making sure that all of this is bad.
Correct.
Yeah, there'll be a checklist, that's kind of how we do the community room in the park when they-
Right.
It's part of the deposit.
And that's the wisdom of having a deposit.
Like Joseph's department.
Things go missing.
Or it could be your parks and rec person.
Could be your parks and rec person.
It could be your parks and rec person. Can Sudy drive a truck? Um, so that, okay, so we'll mark that as, I'll put it on-
Yeah.
What about the LPRs?
There's all kinds of rules that have to come up.
We'll talk about that in capital.
We'll deliver it on Friday and pick it up on Monday.
Yeah, right, pretty much.
So it'll sit out all weekend, so that would be the only thing I would-
Well, you'll have a ball lock on it and, you have a tongue lock on it and lock some of the doors and-
So, um-
But yeah, that's what it happens. And you got one person that's coming to check it out.
GPS tag it.
And that's who's gonna be responsible for it.
So, the last, um, item on the special events and one-time ads is gonna be the fiftieth year celebration. It's kind of a, you know, I don't know how we wanna approach this. Do we want to talk about it continually and not restrict ourselves to try to put a number on it right now? Um, try to figure out some plans, we, we really need some feedback, what, what are we looking to do, you know, um, obviously, it's gonna be bigger than a regular civic club event, right?
Well, absolutely.
Yes, so-
I think it ought to be in the parks, I think it ought to be-
Big deal.
Better than catered, sort of, by somebody who's, they could-
Uh, I'm gonna propose, and I don't know with our council, I'm gonna propose, I'd like to see some ideas, I'd like this scale.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but get some numbers and come back to us, I think this is gonna be something we're gonna pull out of cash reserves.
Yeah, it was going to be, yeah.
If it's gonna come out of cash reserves and we all agree tonight it's coming out of cash reserves,
That's why I only commit ourselves right now.
We don't need to have a decision about it tonight, but I agree with Charlie, this needs to be, this needs to be a big deal. Whether barbecue, that could be ideal, but-
We need a committee.
And I think, I think you probably ought to put together a committee with some people.
I would say Tammy's probably gonna be number one with the restaurant relations that we have.
But I, I think you, you need to put it together, committee, grab a couple, uh, you know, a couple council members, some, some, put, put it together, but it needs, it needs to be a big deal and it's gonna cost some money, and we're gonna pay for it out of reserves.
Yeah.
So-
Debbie has done a lot of research.
I would take all that and put it aside and-
We, we've got, we've been tossing around some ideas that we'll bring to you all, along with, you know, getting, seeking some other input.
We just, yeah, sorry.
It's okay. Um, because this is an event on a different scale, um, I'll probably ask, uh, John to be involved as well because he has run large events before. Um, so, yeah, we've been tossing around a lot of different things, so we'll, we'll come back to you all with some ideas.
And maybe something, you know, it's at the park, I mean, you talked to C I S D about the parking lot over there, I mean, that, it's a big deal.
I think some live music, you know, roll up, uh, uh, a trailer, flatbed trailer back there.
We did that for Stag Bowl.
Put a band in the back, give him some electricity and, and rock and roll.
Yeah, like the festival for Stag Bowl.
Yeah, Tammy did a really good job on that, um, she's got a lot of contacts in that industry, so-
Let's keep it below five hundred thousand dollars.
That was swim.
CVB cannot pay for it.
Um, oh, yes, the CVB funds cannot pay for this party.
Where have I heard that before?
So this will be on a general fund. That's, we just wanted to put on your radar that we are talking about it, kind of get a little bit of feedback, um, it's, it's a bigger event. Probably will be probably in the spring, uh, early spring.
And it should be.
It should be, that's when the city was founded.
Yes.
So I'd suggest that if y'all are gonna go to C I S D, y'all need to do that fairly quickly.
I, I see a problem with the C I S D because it's on, on the other side of the highway. Most people are not gonna go.
I see a problem with it because you're probably not gonna be able to reserve it, and, and
Yeah.
Their, their events have precedence, so if they have something come up, then they push us out.
I think the park is big enough.
Yeah.
Just for grins, we'll, we'll talk to C I S D too, just in case.
Yeah, just in case.
Just going to it out there.
Because we, we have had conversations with them lately and their philosophy about, uh, us using their facilities. Uh, they're more open to it now, and of course, that, we would not interfere with their, uh, events. But we'll just get as much information as we can, as much different information, and, uh, we'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
Because I, I can tell you right now that, uh, the township is planning a big, big event. They're at the, uh, the park over there by the lake. Oh, and they're spending a lot of money on it.
Yes.
I know that.
People.
Well, they got a little bit more to spend than we do.
Yeah, they got a little bit more, but, but anyway.
A few more residents, yeah.
In a proportionate scale, I think we should-
Yes, absolutely.
We should have a, a nice one too.
And the good thing, if we, if we were able to work something out with C I S D, yes, people have to go to the other side, but they can also park there.
Parking, yeah. Correct.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's probably what we're running on TV.
Let's make sure it's not on the same day as the Woodlands one.
Do we know the date, the exact date?
We have not set that date yet.
The Woodlands.
Oh, the Woodlands.
The exact date of the, of, of the, uh-
It's in April? When it like-
You're saying that the city's incorporation?
Yes.
Was it, I thought it was February, but, well, we can get that information, yeah.
And it may not- For some reason, I thought it was April. Because that's six miles away.
Yeah, yeah, it may not, but-
As long as it's not in July.
Yeah.
Right for ours or something.
For August.
How much time do we have?
Um, so we just have to talk about capital.
Okay.
And, and you, it's, it's one, two, three, four, five, six general fund projects, and then the water sewer, um, some of those projects are gonna be pushed off, um, and Joseph will have more explanation about that.
Why don't we take a-
I just wanna take like a ten-minute, five-minute break real quick.
Why don't we take a ten-minute break?
It should be very ready long after that. All right, so last and final discussion, um, before we go back to the tax rate. Uh, capital projects and purchases, um, I've listed out the M D D, which they approved, um, so those are already done. Um, there are ones, there are six, um, general fund eligible projects. One was added, uh, later, the license plate readers, we'll get to that. Um, if we, we could just go down straight to down the list, so the first would be the city hall parking replacement and P D fencing. I have it still in the C I P, um, nothing's been officially moved, so.
Oh.
Cause it's only a council eligible project.
I got you. So, yeah, I, I, I agree with Charlie, I think we, we're gonna push that to next year's discussion.
Yes. Well, that was for M D D eligible projects, I had to bring it back for the council to discuss that, yeah, so we'll move that. Well.
Cause we're, we're still talking about other possibilities, I think Joseph and Chief are looking at some other options. We tried to do the fencing and the, and the awnings and that, nobody wanted to bid on it, I think was my understanding.
Right.
Cause it was less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, when we tried to do the covers, we're looking at doing the covers.
And then the one point eight is this giant project that covers the entirety of everything.
Right, it's, it's new parking lot, it's new parking lot lights.
Yeah.
Fence, it's, it's everything on the north side of the building.
And we were talking about doing incrementally, right?
And then we, then, then there was an option of backing up and just doing the police, which would, which would add expense, which might, might attract some bidders, but I don't know where we got to in that in terms of a. Yeah, I, I, I think, I think everybody agreed we're gonna put it all off, but I think when we bring it back next year, maybe we buy chunks of it and see what, see what that does.
Right.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm much more concerned with taking care of our, our, our police with the fencing and taking care of that, that driveway and parking lot than sort of the rest of it.
We've got some life left in our parking lot, too.
Yeah, I, I think the rest of our parking lot's kinda o- okay, it's not ideal, but.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll move that out, um, the next is an ice machine, um, we have one over the whole board building, it's pretty much.
So where is that capital project?
It's a purchase, so it's over, it's got useful life. Well, just to approve the funding for it, that's what we're bringing it to you.
I kinda hit it.
Since it's a one-time purchase.
But it's a one-time purchase.
It's a one-time purchase, so.
Yeah, the ice machines are gonna last years and years and years.
And Charlie's right, I mean, Kathy can.
We could put it in the operate, it's up to you.
It's less than fifteen thousand.
We just wanted a funding delegation for it, so.
You can't buy it this year, but.
I mean, you can go buy it now, like.
It's up to you, Joseph just has it as a purchase, so.
Yeah, so since it's a one-time purchase, that's why we called it out, is it, so the last time it was looked at, the cost of replacing the, the part that's going out is worth more than the machine itself. Um, it could last us another year, it could last us a month, is basically what the technician said. Uh, so we put it on here for replacement, hoping that it'll last through the end of the year, cause this is the ice machine we use for city events, and we use it tonight for the ice we use tonight.
I, I think everybody, and I don't speak for everybody, but I'm getting the vibe from Charlie that, that this is.
Just get it.
Just get it, just take, just, just buy a new.
Okay, we just.
You're replacing an existing one, you're not adding a new machine. This is six thousand dollars that, I mean, I don't know if everybody else feels that way, but that's kinda where I'm at with it.
I'm perfectly fine with that, we'd just like to call it out since it's a one-time thing.
I, I appreciate the experience.
It's a one dollar item.
Yeah, okay, no, it's a lot easier.
Uh, next would be gym improvements, um, fifteen K.
They were dropped.
So.
Yeah, leave it, yeah.
We, we've talked about this a couple of times, my understanding is that, that every employee is paid for an hour a day to go work out.
To get workout time.
P D or everybody?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody is, is actually.
That policy was changed back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Paid, paid for an hour a day, so five hours a week, to go work out, and I don't know if that's best use of resources maintaining a facility here, or if we've got lifetime coming in, we've got some other that might, does it make more sense to?
I think it's cause it's right here, so you could run over and run back, you're not stuck in traffic, there's a shower.
If I can say something to that, that the law, the officers are able to do that, and that, you know, they're able to park behind a facility that they know is secure, they don't have to worry about going to twenty-four hour fitness and the patrol car getting broken into. So that's, it's a huge, huge thing for the patrol guys, huge.
It would take more than an hour for them to be able to, to have to go somewhere.
Don't you require them to work out every day anyway?
We don't, we don't require it, we try to build a culture of that, but we don't require it. It's something that we're looking forward to in the future, having some mandatory stuff that does sound like.
And so in the reality, we're, we have it for P D and we're allowing the rest of the staff to take advantage of it as well.
Yeah, we, we changed that policy in fifteen or sixteen, yeah. Um, and it is like, you know, most of us don't have all that time, so I go on my lunch break, and I know Joseph usually goes on his lunch break. Um, so some staff use it, some don't, and it's not primarily that workout hour for the gym, they can go walk around the neighborhood.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, go to the park, maybe run, um, just, it says you have to be, and I think the policy says you have to be on city property, I believe. I have to review it, so.
That's fifteen K, that's just buying some new equipment or refreshing stuff, or?
Right, getting a, refreshing some equipment, getting a bottle filler in there that works, right now we've got a little refrigerator. We can get something like the, the P D did in their hall, it's real quick, easy hookup to water supply.
You're welcome.
Um, a T V that people can connect to and do exercise programs, it's the one we got in there.
It's from like two thousand eight.
You have the C R T?
It's really, really old, and TVs are, are really cheap right now, so it's just replacing some of that equipment, updating some of the equipment.
Um, okay, so next would be the public works building on in, um, it's also a lower purchase.
Why don't, why don't you just buy it now?
Yeah, okay.
Take it off the budget. Is that replacement or is that a enhancement?
It's a replacement.
Okay, replacement, replace it, just replace it.
Okay.
Um, the next one will be city functional education videos, this is kinda following in line to the code enforcement one that we had done. Uh, we did it one time to see how it would do, um, and this would be a contract, I believe for four videos.
How many?
Four.
Up to four, yeah, four videos.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we got, uh, so far, I believe Kirby got four or five quotes. And, uh, as much as we enjoyed working with the previous, um, company, they're a little on the higher side of those quotes. And I looked at the quotes and they do, they do line up pretty closely. So we were looking for some kind of differentiation, but, uh, and I, I have not finished assessing the, you know, I wanna look at their work, I wanna look at work samples. Talk to some clients they've served previously, that kinda thing, so.
I guess when I, I, I don't speak for anybody, when I envisioned these, I was thinking a lot more casual, you know, kinda the interviewing the office with some, you know, sitting in front of a mic kinda thing, tell me what, what goes on, not necessarily, you know, production, full production ready. This is not my market, so I don't know.
We wanted to make sure that they were good quality, well-done, scripted out properly, and also that, I mean, we don't have the, the same amount of time and expertise on staff.
Okay.
And we, we didn't want it to look like we did it on our phone or something, you know, we wanted it to be really nice. Uh, but if you, if council.
I was just, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, we're talking.
Every video doesn't have to be Faran jumping through the weeds, so.
Yeah, I guess that's, anyway.
And we relied, um, on, I mean, all of the actors, if you will, you know, were voluntary, they were free. Um, and we, we were really pleased with how it turned out, and we want them to be effective, and we want other people to enjoy watching them, to want to see them. So it's just, uh, gotta pay for that.
How are we getting them distributed, who's, how's it going out?
We had, it's on our website, it's been pushed out to social media, um, am I missing something?
No, it's, it's, it's linked to our website on YouTube, linked out to YouTube.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how many people have seen it, how many views?
Um, well, we could, we, we could pull that information off of our, um, analytics, how many clicks, click peruse to, to, I mean, obviously goes out to YouTube, but we can get the hits.
I think it's a, it's beautiful, I just wonder how much.
Two hundred and eight views.
If a hundred thousand, if we're getting a hundred thousand dollars value out of it.
No, this would be, uh, the placeholder twenty-five for four.
But you're doing, I thought it's four of them.
It's not per video.
All, all four of them for four, twenty-five for four?
Correct, yeah.
Oh.
It's pretty reasonable for, for, for full coverage of the video.
Yeah, oh, okay, I thought it was a hundred.
Scripted, it's very, very well clear.
If it's scripted, I mean, I guess there's, that there's some, that there's some.
I mean, I, I'll say the nice thing about it is that, I mean, it's turnkey, so we don't have to put in any effort except for.
Okay.
Acting, you know, we don't have to even think about it, they've all scripted out, I, I think it's fantastic for what we're, what we're paying, but, you know.
It's great.
I was just gonna, I mean, I was gonna do it, I was gonna run around the office with my city issued cellphone and just corner people and ask them some questions and interview them and see what we got.
Jay Leno or something.
Which that may still be a good idea, cause, you know, a lot of people don't know what, you know, some of these directors, our directors do, but what they're responsible for. You know, so that may be also.
It's probably gonna save someone like Lisa a lot of time if there's something that somebody could be directed to click on before trying to meet with her, so that she can save some time.
Yeah.
Here's what the pit is about, here's, here's what the, here's what, uh, you know, our debt, how we pay debt and things like that.
People think.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of finance, uh, that, uh, matters that are discussed, that they're, they are hard to understand.
This is a capital project, this is not.
Excuse me.
Okay, so is that?
Yes.
Yes, I like it.
It's a hundred one thousand, what?
Well, we haven't, we'll, we'll bring it back with all the funding mechanisms and.
What we're saying.
Yeah, so the last one will be the license plate reader, so this one did come in after I got books out, um, so, uh.
Wait, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, these are all one-time purchases, is that correct?
They're treated as a capital project or purchase, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, so as far as the N N R rate goes, as of right now, we've already met that.
For the operating, yeah, if you wanted to put any of these towards your operating, you know.
But none of these are going towards operating.
Yeah, so what I will bring up forward and say, you know, at the next meeting and say, here's all these things.
So whether, whether we have two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars left here and we're just choosing things to, to, to do at this point, that's, we've already met our operating budget.
Mm-hmm. It's just if you wanna delegate surplus for anything.
Correct.
Eventually, so I'm just, what we're just going through is like.
That's what I'm trying, that's what, that's what I'm trying to make, is that.
Yeah.
We don't have to be right on to that two sixty-five that's there.
So the, the operator side has to transfer money out of their budget into cap, into for, to pay for all the.
Operating does not.
So it, you could pull the revenue from.
It's coming from the general fund, it's different. As far as the, as far as the N N R rate goes, as far as the no new revenue rate goes.
We're done with operating.
We've already, we've already met the no new revenue rate.
That's good, so we're, we're doing interesting.
So as far as taking a vote for the no new revenue rate, this has no impact on it.
Oh, okay.
So if you're still trying to budget into that three sixty-five or two sixty-five that's left, these projects, that, it doesn't matter.
We've met our obligations for operating, these are just going through these items saying, okay, is this something that you wanna move forward with?
Correct.
At the next meeting, I bring them back and say, how, you know, these can be the funding mechanisms.
And that's, that's my point, is that as far as the N N R rate goes, we've already met, we're already below that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we're above the two sixty-five at this point, we're just allocating where it's going.
So if we wanna take a vote, we, we, we could. This is coming from general.
But that doesn't impact the N N R rate.
Cause we could pay this out of cash today.
This can come out of cash reserves, this can come out of.
Yeah, you don't have to necessarily net it, that's why, we'll just go through each project, see if there's the.
No, I'm just trying to explain so everybody has an understanding that that doesn't impact the N N R rate.
If we adopt the N N R rate, no, it won't affect, that's all the money we have for this. No, we're talking about, do you know.
No.
We'll have to tap cash reserves to meet the rest of obligations.
Correct. So we, we would use, we would use other sources and not operating.
We could, I understand what you're trying to say.
Yeah. That's why if we just go through them and say, hey, this is something we want to go move forward, when I come back to the next meeting at the end of the month, I'll have everything listed out, say, here's where we're thinking about funding, and have it all sit, uh, situated at that point.
There is one thing that could apply, that's the, the annual fee for license plate readers.
Yes, so that's the only, and that's.
Correct.
Would need to get moved in operations.
Correct, so anything that would impact operating annually.
So that.
But if it's a one-time purchase, it's not going to impact the N N R rate. The N N R budget we've already met, does that make sense?
The, the flock it, but it's, it's not, okay, here it is now, sorry, it wasn't pulling all that the first, first time. Okay, so this was requested, it took Troy a little bit of time to get with flock, um, not flock it, sorry, flock. Um, and to get an idea, so Troy, I don't know if you wanna walk through this quote.
Zoom in on that one.
So, it did take a little while because there was a lot of contributing factors to this. We had, uh, to take in consideration the tax out right away and stuff like that, uh, where power was gonna be, um,
Sorry.
gathered from, so, um, some of this stuff, uh, uh, some of the, the cameras would have to be, uh, plugged into, to power. Uh, there wouldn't be able to be solar because of the service road and the amount of lanes that are on the service road, so, um, with that, what, where we decided to, to put them was a strategic location that would benefit the city, put a perimeter around the city. So pretty much anywhere you enter, um, the city, you would, you would get tagged. Um, but, the, um, the total being sixty-one, uh, six fifty, now, some of that is going to be your, uh, the annual reoccurring subtotal, which is the twenty-eight, and then your, their one-year, uh, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty, um, so. So your annual would be your twenty-eight, and then the rest of it would be just a one-time purchase, so.
Is it a purchase or a subscription fee?
For, are you talking about the, the twenty-eight or the thirty-three?
Which, which part is the purchase and which is the subscription fee?
So the thirty-three would be the purchase and the twenty-eight would be this, your, your yearly subscription.
And that, that covers replacement breakage, keeping it operating, right?
Absolutely, that covers everything.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm believing.
It's not just a, it's not a buy, and we're, we're paying for software, we're actually-
So they, they replace it, they take care of it, um, so you're basically leasing these from the company. So that twenty-eight thousand a year is what you're leasing from them, and then the thirty-three, six fifty would be-
So a camera, a camera breaks, they come and fix it.
They fix it.
Replace it.
Yes, and this system is way far superior than what we have.
And it's compatible with the new N-DASH units that you're buying?
Uh, yes, and we'll, we have access to, to LPRs everywhere, um, so we have that software that we can read other cameras. Uh, but having them, uh, placed in strategic locations, I think-
Flock is not part of the Motorola family?
No, not, not, not to this day.
Not yet, okay.
Yeah.
Cause there's been a lot of consolidation.
Right, absolutely, but, um-
They're, they're vigilant.
Yes.
They all vigilant.
But we have access to, to, to various ones, and we want to keep that, but.
How many cameras does this include?
Uh, I believe it includes two or, I believe it's eight, I'm not, so, at every location, they have, um, they have multiple cameras, so it's gonna be more than that, um, and it, it depends on, like, the service road, they have to utilize different cameras, and, uh, how many, that they, how many lanes that they can read at one time, so. But it is, it's eight different locations, I'll, I'll say that.
Great.
Yeah.
And we would be committing for how many years?
So this is annually, as long as we want to keep paying for it.
Okay, so the twenty-eight thousand is annually?
Yes.
The thirty-one's or thirty-three's a one-time?
Correct.
Boy, that's worth it.
Is there like a contract period for the, the service for the annual subscription? Can you get a five-year contract? What do you do?
I, I, I believe it's just a one, it's just, you pay every year.
So we don't have an idea what the escalation would be?
No.
Would you be able to find out from them historically what they've raised at?
I, I'm sorry, repeat.
Historically, what have they raised at?
I, I don't know, that, I know they were twenty-five hundred per camera, but that was for solar power only. That wasn't for the electrical hookup, the poles, stuff like that, so, they're, they're gonna be doing a little bit extra work here because of the locations I requested, they're gonna have, like I said, have to deal with Texas DOT, which we all know how that is, and then putting up, uh, put them on, uh, certain poles.
Could you, could you ask what, uh, what their, uh, escalation has been previously, so we kind of get an idea of moving forward, what, what that would be?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's twenty-eight thousand this year and it moves to forty-two thousand next year, then?
I, I know historically through stuff like this, it's usually three or five percent, you know.
Yeah.
Unless you're looking, like, not the exact same thing, but like, this year, I had thirty, thirty, just over thirty percent increase, and, but that's because, part of it's, because some companies didn't increase for two, for a year, and then they try to get us all at once.
Right.
But it's, you know, tech and stuff, it's usually five and seven percent a year is what I usually anticipate.
I can tell you the overall benefit that this would do to the city is gonna be, it's gonna be a huge impact.
Probably a huge benefit, yeah. So have we, have we had preliminary discussions with Texas DOT? I know, I mean, are we, do we think those locations are gonna be, they're gonna be open to doing this? Are we looking at six months to a year to get all the implementation done? I mean, I, I throw that out there because we've talked to them about other things.
Right.
Yeah.
I think some of the things that, uh, they discussed, uh, would be easier, some of it, I believe, is, is, uh, is our stuff. I don't want to, want to give too much because I don't want to put it out there, but some of it is, is our stuff that we're attaching to, um, and, but some of it is, uh, other companies that they're attaching to, but, um, I don't, I don't think it would be that much of an issue. They, they haven't reached out yet because they're waiting on us to, to make a decision what we're gonna do, but, uh-
So these are only for those eight fixed positions, and then, we've talked about running them in cars and cell phones and other?
Oh, no, so the, the, the camera, the video systems and everything like that that we have now, uh, will, will accommodate for that, so, I'm not, uh, the, the places that we have them placed, uh, would, like I said, it would be a huge impact.
So we'll keep what we already have, which I think is what, like, four of them, and this will be another eight?
We're gonna retire those?
Twelve, are we gonna get rid of the ones we have now?
No, I, I think that it would be good just for us to, to, to keep up with those, um, it, it's always good, it's always an extra tool.
Are they usable with the Flock software, the current cameras, or no?
No.
Okay, so there's no, they won't be able to tie together?
No, we'll, we'll have to have, but we already have access to that stuff, so we just maintain that access to it. Cause it is, it's a, it's a, it's a tool, and the more tools we have for that, the better off we are.
How many more years are we gonna get out of the existing ones?
Out of the existing ones? Man, that's like trying to figure out how long-
I'm trying to remember how long we've had them, was it four years? Five years?
Yeah, five years, but, I mean, we, we had them go down, we had to replace a couple of parts this year, um, I mean, they take a lot, it's, they're in brutal conditions, so if you get five years out of them, you're probably doing good, and that's about, that's in the life expectancy of them, so.
But they were working today when we dispatched, which dog?
Oh, that, that was actually Flock cameras that were, uh, located at various locations.
Was their Flock cameras, not, not our cameras?
It was, it was Flock locate, uh, cameras that were located in various locations throughout the city.
But, but we do pay maintenance for the cameras we have out there now, so we pay annually for, for that. It's, uh, it's several thousand.
You gotta figure out when you're gonna pull the plug on that, if they're worth running anymore.
But, but, they pay for the maintenance, right? I mean?
No, we, well, the current ones, we pay, we're paying annual maintenance to keep those-
And then we also pay to repair them? Or no, they pay to repair them?
Y'all made me already and I go out and repair them.
And you, and you said the, the annual maintenance on the four of them is, we're paying how much?
I mean, I get up in the bucket truck and everything.
The warranties are expired in them, and, and so basically, there, there are, so we have to repair and repair.
This, this system is all in, if it goes out, they come replace it and it's all taken care of, that's-
Correct. Correct. That's the difference, yes.
Fifty-fifty warranty there now, two and a half, we own the warranty. It, it really not worth it carrying a hardware warranty on our equipment because it's cheaper, you can rust a pad of pocket, you know, and go out there and repair it.
Right.
Yeah.
We were paying ten times that much just, just for that insurance policy, which is all you're paying, and it, you know, it's just not-
No, I agree, I agree with you, I'm just saying, this, this is a diff, gonna be a different system.
This is a better way to go because it's all included, you don't have to worry about that, and that's, and that's really a lot of them, it's like with, you know, in-car video systems, a lot of different hardware, they're moving that way. They want you on a subscription and they want you on an operational, an annual operational basis.
Is the video in the cloud for this?
This would be.
Yes, alright.
Yeah, cause all, they're cellular enabled and they just, it just pushes the video up, so it doesn't, we don't store it, turnkey.
I like it, so I would propose that we move the annual recurring and, and operating budget and then the one-time expense we use against our cash.
Which, Troy, I, now that I'm reading the contract, a little bit more, the math's not adding up, so, subtotal year one is only thirty-three, six fifty this year, right?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, so, yeah, their contract's weird, sorry, I was reading it too, so I don't know why they have a contract amount at the bottom, because if you add-
The thirty-three and twenty-eight, it doesn't add, it doesn't add up.
Oh yeah, it's just the, the one-time fees are six fifty and five, five thousand.
Yeah, so I was sitting here and I was like, why am I missing this?
Oh, no, it is, yeah.
It adds up.
It adds up to sixty-one.
So you have the one-time and then your recurrent?
But subtotal year one.
Right, because it's your-
You do twenty-eight up there, plus six fifty plus five.
It's your five thousand plus six fifty, plus twenty-eight, that's your thirty-three, so really, all we need to take out of, out of reserve cash is fifty-six fifty, and then the twenty-eight goes into operating.
We need to get clarification from Flock on that, yeah, cause there, it doesn't make sense for invoice.
Okay.
Conceptually, we agree.
You're conceptually agreed.
Yeah, we're, we're good with the product, we'll figure it out, yeah.
Between now, between now and next week, you figure, or next meeting, figure it out.
We're good, yeah, I was just looking at it, I'm like, that doesn't add up.
I think it's the way they, the verb is easy, because you got your, your-
Yeah.
Your one-time cost is typically, they say, and then your annual recurring, which is twenty-eight.
Maybe they're making us agree to two years, I don't know.
They need an accountant there, just kidding.
No, it, it's, it's, it's their one-year, I, they're, they're, their annual reoccurring is the twenty-eight, and then your upfront cost, your one-time cost, is gonna be your, uh, thirty-three.
So why is the twenty-eight at there twice, so the twenty at top?
Five thousand, six hundred and fifty is your one-time cost, plus your twenty-eight for the year.
The, the twenty-eight at, at the top?
Yep.
Yeah, cause that's what they're adding together, you get the thirty-three, six fifty.
Yep.
Twenty-eight plus six fifty plus five.
Y'all chase that down.
Yeah, we're gonna call them, it's fine.
Well, I just see it as they're including that twenty-eight thousand in year one, plus your one-time fees.
Yes.
And then thereafter, you don't have the one-time fees, you're just paying the twenty-eight.
Yes.
Exactly.
Right, that's the deal.
That's all I'm reading.
It's okay, you just roll off the sixty-one off of the screen.
I think it's wrong, but I will call, I will call.
Yeah.
I will call, okay.
Close, close enough there.
Uh, moving on to the last part of the project, it's gonna be water sewer, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Joseph take the lead on this because of the developments that we've had with, uh, the water loan today, um-
Yeah, I'd recommend, let's start at the bottom, the, the biggest project here, because it's gonna affect the other projects that we have on the list. Uh, and that's the wastewater treatment plant, um, uh, re-improvements project. You have any desire for me to go over some of the history on that, or just jump right into the numbers?
It went over, the bids went over.
It went over, so I can, I can do a quick history.
Tell them about the bids.
I just jump right in, want me to just jump right in the numbers?
Yeah.
Alright, let's jump right in the numbers. Um, so this project, we just recently bid it, oh, two, three weeks ago, and the bids came in higher than the loan amount we have from the Texas Water Development Board. Um, I can go over really quickly where the bids are at, some of the negotiations that staff is having with that contractor, uh, and then I think it'd be best for Lisa to jump in the financing side of it and where we're at there. So, the base bid that staff is looking at accepting is at eight point, uh, one-five million dollars. The cost estimates that we had back in, I think we started this in twenty-twenty-one, was six point five. There has been some effects of COVID inflation, uh, with that one in particular, with electrical components. But staff has, has sat down, we actually sat down with the, our engineers a couple of weeks ago, to see what we could value engineer, potentially remove. But a lot of the items are base bid items, so we met with the contractor, actually earlier today, for the first time, to discuss removal of some of those base bid items. Now, the reason I'm emphasizing that is when you're changing base bid items, um, it is a negotiation, the contractor can say, no, take it or leave it, and they can walk from it, because those are, those are your base items, they're not add-ons, they're not extras or alternates. And so what staff did, we, with blown engineering, we looked at, uh, components of this project that we looked for, I'll just give you some examples of things that we've pulled. Uh, one is we were, we were gonna relocate the, the fuel tanks as a part of this project, uh, just to get them out, out of the way of some of the other components. It was gonna be more for convenience, so we've pulled that out. Uh, we're looking at rehabbing a manhole, that's something that we're gonna pull out, um, and do later, the price is kind of high anyway. We had some tracks for our dumpster where the, uh, the solid, the bio solids are dumped, we pulled that out. Uh, so we, we went through and pulled out as much as we possibly could, um, and that has removed two hundred and ninety-seven thousand from the base bid, that eight point one-five, so that leaves us at, um, needing seven point eight, and some change, um, seven point eight-five million. We had initially looked at potentially removing the de-watering system, which was by itself about a one point two million dollar deduct. However, there were a lot of concerns, not only from the city operators, uh, because that unit is almost forty years old, but also concerns from the contractor about removing such a large item from the bid. Um, and so we, we toned it down to these other items and kept the de-watering system in the contract. So, just to sum that up, uh, the base bid was eight point one-five million, the trims that we, we've already talked to the contractor, they're comfortable with that. There may be some additional, we did ask, um, ask him to take a look at his pricing on the de-watering system, to see if he could sharpen his pencil, and he agreed to do that. So there could be some, um, additional decreases, but right now, we're looking at, you know, just under, um, eight million dollars, so seven point eight-five million needed, dollars needed to award this project.
So we're one point three-five short.
It's, yes.
Yeah.
So, well, Lisa, if you want to go into the, the finances we have available.
Technically.
Six point five is what the loan is approved for, but when you take out the origination fee, the, um, construct, the construction oversight, um, what was it, five point four we had to play with, is that what Johnny Green said?
Yes, five point four.
Um, so five point four.
After origination fees and design.
So, um, so currently in, unencumbered, in water sewer, we have about one point two-five. So, in order to award the bid though, they have to have fund and all delegated, right?
Yes. The full funding needs to be in place.
There was talks about going back to the board scene, but because of how the board funds this, it's through a loan, it's, they give you a loan, but they, they basically sell you a, a CO, and they establish the rate, um, that takes a lot of time, it goes through AG, there's a credit rating, any agencies, it's a lot. Um, I talked to John Martin and he said, yeah, that's not gonna work, so.
Wait, so you said our net loan was five point four?
When you take out Blile's oversight, the origination fees, all the other stuff that goes, when you have to settle, um, like official statement and stuff.
Six point five? That's one point one.
One point one million?
Yes, so that covers, like Lisa said, the origination fees, the design, and also the construction administration.
Well, how much were the origination fees?
Let's find the official statement, give me a minute, we're gonna see.
What was that? Hundred and thousand, hundred and fifty or something, yeah, you can find it.
So we had not paid for design?
No, design is, basically what we're saying is that money's already-
Encumbered or spent.
Encumbered, or spent.
What, did we already pay for it?
Yes, the design is already completed, construction administration is still pending because, if the project's not awarded, then you don't need for it.
What do we- What do we pay that?
But what is the amount, what is the amount that we have then?
Five point four to play with.
Five point four?
Yeah.
So, so-
My assumption is MDD paid for it and the idea was the loan was gonna pay it back, is that right?
Yeah, so that's five hundred thousand there.
That's five hundred thousand, okay.
Plus the origination fee is probably like one forty, one eighteen.
Yeah, it's, it's something between a hundred and fifty thousand.
I would have to fill in the official statement, cause whenever you do a, a CO, there's, there's costs that go also with them, and then all the other, to get that, all this done, we had to pay the financial advisor, we had to pay Blile, had a contract for the actual application, there was another, you know, there's money that goes into this, so, and I can get you all those official numbers, I'm gonna have to find the official statement, I think it's on a CD.
Okay, so, so which of these projects do you want to defer to make it fit, is the bottom line?
So, hold on a minute.
No, you're good.
What have we already paid for?
So, the, I'll pull it up.
And have we reimbursed MDD yet?
I have their, I'm doing all their transfers at the end of the month, cause I was waiting for everything to chew out.
I, I was gonna hold, I was gonna suggest, hold up on that, because we can slow that down.
Well-
Take it in.
Okay, we've been reimbursed, so, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, um, so, sorry, I'm going through this real quick, um-
Because MDD hasn't allocated that money anywhere else, so.
Because MDD hasn't allocated that money anywhere else. That's the point. So.
We, we can pay it back slowly if we don't.
Correct. Or we can go back to MDD and just ask if they could just continue to contribute. It is an MDD eligible project.
I, I will, while Lisa's looking that up, I will say that this is a project that'll span two years. So when you, when we're looking at this, the actual cash flows, you know, they're not all gonna hit they go in.
All at the same time.
Right.
And we're looking at trying to find ways to present options to you for financing. There was ideas of. You know, as you have additional revenues over the next two years, uh, you may be touching very little of what funds you need as a, a capital advance. Just to have the fun, you know, just to have the funding in place so you can award the project. You know, you may not even touch the funds by the end of two years just because of the way revenues will continue to come in.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go back because of the audit adjustments and everything. It's, it's not, it's a little.
You're not gonna know right now then. So what do you, what do you, what are you asking to defer then?
I can, I can jump into that.
Yes, please.
Um.
It's getting late.
So.
Lisa's getting tired. She can't add anymore.
I know. Well, no, it's because of how the, unfortunately, cause how it's, it's up in an escrow, so you have to back into it. It's, it's fun.
Yeah, I understand.
Super fun, accounting.
So the first item there, that's one to keep, the chlorine system replacement. Just because of the safety concerns with that, you don't want leaking chlorine. And the.
What's the amount Water Sewer has in budget now? I mean, in accounting now?
Um.
While she looks that up, cause this'll be real quick. Also keeping the TDS study. That's the fifth item down. That's a requirement from TCEQ.
Okay.
Uh, basically all the other projects defer. The Oak Haven may come back. We are working with a developer, uh, on a potential joint venture where they're gonna pay. Uh, for a, a portion of those costs, so that may come back at a later date. But for now, the only two to keep is the tedious study and the chlorine system replacement. Everything else can be deferred.
Joseph, originally you had the Thorndale station and WP number two pipe coating, the seventy-five there?
Right.
Would you eliminate that?
That's been, it's been pushed back.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, that, that's been pushed back to a later year. Yeah, that, that's on this list. It's the, the.
Okay, I see it here now.
The seventy-five thousand, it's not called the same thing, but that's the project for the, the piping. But yes, that would be, recommendation would be to push, push that back, delay that project.
So if the fire hydrant added, you could next, remove?
Delay, yes.
Oak Haven, is that up in the air?
Uh, the Oak Haven, that can be delayed now. Um, we have a developer that we are in conversations with. That, uh, may need to connect through that section and we'd work on a joint venture to have them cover a portion of those costs.
The TDS study stays, the water plant two and three chlorine stays, water plant two booster pump cover stays?
Delayed.
Delayed.
The only two that stay were.
The only, the only two, we're keeping two. The very first and then the TDS study.
Thirty-seven thousand.
How about the outfall line replacement?
That will be outfall line replacement.
Is that one, is that one fifty? I thought that that was fifty before.
Where's that at?
Second to the last.
Oh, there it is. No, that's delay. We can delay that one.
But I mean, it is one fifty, not fifty.
It's one fifty. We gotta update it.
Alright, okay, updated. No wonder mine's still says fifty. Alright.
How about the cameras?
Cameras, delay.
Do we have any security issues over there? Does the one have a fence issue over there too?
The fence replacement is a part of the, this improvement project. Uh, we've had one burglary over there, seven, eight years ago. My opinion, I think it was an inside job with a disgruntled employee. He's gone.
Did you find that number?
Yeah, so in, um, we take out certain liabilities and, um, I do have a placeholder for the CCN purchase that we're gonna have to make. I took that out already. You have one point two-five unallocated cash. Um, so, excuse me.
If we delay the payment, whether MDD eventually decides if, if right now we can not put that five hundred thousand back immediately. What would that give us in terms of meeting our obligation? How, how much, how much more gap do we need to come up with?
Million.
We're still short, we're still short a million?
Which, um, the competition we had today was, um, just to commit the fund in. We could do, um, an advance, um, coverage from, like an advancement from general fund that would be paid back.
Yeah, that's fine.
And just to commit the fund in and then, um, cause the, how slow the project's gonna move.
Yes.
It's just, but before we put the bid, we have to have all ducks in a row. Um, so that's kind of what we were discussing today. If council's good with that.
I'm, I'm in favor of that. Again, I'm sorry to MDD if they're okay with, with letting that loan create the same situation. And I think we need to plan to have that loan paid off, but if it takes five years to do it, ten years to do it, I. I wanna put that money back in MDD so that they can get their scores back. Same thing with general fund. Hopefully we'd be in a position three years from now where it can all go back, but. I'm okay with advancing the money from.
So for like.
Basically make, making, effectively making a loan from general fund to water sewer with a, with a plan. I think we want a plan to pay it back.
It makes more sense than having to go out and take out like a tax note or something of interest.
Yeah.
Um, that's what we were discussing this morning about that. Um, so.
Like six years ago, we were looking at water, we were increasing water and sewer rates for a million dollar loan. I mean, we, we increased it. For a six million dollar loan and have a million in reserves and so we can, yeah, we're, we're fine.
So, um, to date, we've paid, um, four eighty-eight-nine out. Uh, for like legal notices, Blile, and then the, um, part of the bond, the loan closing was a hundred and four thousand. So that's where you're at. So that's.
So we have.
Five ninety-three.
So we have five point four.
But that's also not included in the encumbrances for the remainder of the Blile contract. I would have to look at the contract to see what the difference is there.
See what's there.
Hmm. Yeah, that's the hard part about this. I'm like, cause it, because that's what we paid. We have it, that's not what is said held, if that makes sense. I would have to look at the contract again.
No, no, we also have impact fees as well that could be delegated for this project.
Three hundred and ninety-three thousand with an impact fees and then we'll be getting another one.
Three hundred and ninety-three thousand?
We'll be getting another one from, um, the Sam Moon Group.
I, I think in principle, my understanding is everybody agrees.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna loan water sewer money. Yeah.
Yeah. And that's fine.
We'll just need that dollar.
Wait, you said we had an impact fee money that was available?
Yeah.
Right.
That wasn't included in the one point two-five?
No, cause it's in a certain fund.
Oh, well, that's what the impact fee's for.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So that's why I was like, there's still gonna be a partial that will come back. So what we'll do is we and Joseph will true up all those numbers. We'll get the contract differences between files overhead and we will bring that all to you next week.
Have a final number, what we need as a capital advance.
Unfortunately, this was, we had a meeting this morning and this is where we're at.
Right. No, that's fine.
And, and we're gonna have better, the contractor's gonna get back with me in a week.
Yeah.
Uh, after sharpening his pencil on the de-watering system. So we'll have, we'll have better numbers on what the contractor is good with.
And, and, and look at our income and again, I'm gonna ask you guys to kinda come up with a plan. What's a payback schedule both for MDD money and for the, the city money so that.
Yep.
I understand things happen. We're all future, you know, crystal balls, but when you borrow money, you should have a plan to pay it back.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's a philosophy I have. And I think we need to set it up even when we're borrowing among ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to this too.
Not like a student loan or anything.
Um, yeah, so after our con, and then once the contractor gets back, we can really nail down those numbers. So, yeah.
So does that, uh?
That's complete, um.
Yeah, I probably should've said this at the beginning, but when we looked at the pricing, this is a good market price. It, yes, it is over what we had, you know, what we thought we'd need.
Three years.
Three years ago?
Well, that was three years ago.
Right. But it's a good market price. The second bidder was within like two, one percent, uh, like three hundred thousand dollars of, of their price. And the, the lowest, the contractor, JTR, this is the same contractor that did our rehab back in two thousand and five. And they're a good contractor. So it's, there's a lot of positives as far as that, uh, the contractor goes and the pricing we received. Probably should've said that in the beginning.
Didn't lead out with that.
But it's said now. For the record, sorry, for the record.
So that irons out that. We'll bring it back. Um, the only things that we have left are item twelve, to have that vote on the tax rate if we wanna go above the NNR or not.
Have, have we included the amounts for equipment replacement in the Tahoe's?
No, cause I was gonna bring that back as a separate fund in.
So, so all of those funds, I mean, there's a certain amount and.
Yeah, cause right now we have like two thirty-five that's on the, in the budget surplus. So we can bring that back and say, this is how we're gonna fund it.
So we're gonna, in order to pay for all of that, then we're gonna have to tap into cash reserves.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanna put that out there, make sure everybody's aware of that.
Especially the, the one-time purchases and stuff like that, like the fiftieth event, stuff like that.
The what?
The fiftieth.
Oh, the fiftieth, yeah. Well, we, yeah, we all know that fiftieth year's coming out, but I was, these are annual recurring.
Yeah.
So, what's that?
So I thought we agreed after budget.
Oh, no, no, we, they're gonna have to come up with, yeah, we're, come up with some ideas.
So, so we're not tapping cash reserves, we're tapping cash.
Yeah, not the, the.
I wanna be very clear.
I wanna be clear about, be very clear.
Available cash.
Yeah, we have available cash.
Available, that's the word I use.
Available cash.
That's been one of my things, is keep those, those words.
Yes.
Correct, so we are not touching our reserve account.
Not touching reserves, we're tapping, tapping available cash.
So with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I would move that, uh, we would approve our no new tax rate at point one four four nine.
We're not gonna approve the actual rate. It's just to prove that we're not gonna go or we will open the possibility. That's the goal.
Correct, we're not gonna go over that.
So. So item twelve, let's throw that.
So is that, does that require a vote?
Yes.
It does.
By truth in taxation.
All, all we're saying tonight is.
That we're not gonna go over, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go, we wouldn't go over it.
So the motion is we're not gonna go.
We're not going over the NNR.
Yes.
What?
Can you have a second, Charlie? Run.
It, it is interesting.
What did you say? Was it Charlie? It was Ron?
Ron, yeah.
My second is the R E B. So I made the motion.
And Ron second.
Somebody did. Lisa did.
And, and we'll get the actual numbers. I'd ask Lisa, but it's interesting to note that our valuations actually increase less than inflation. Which is, it's really quite amazing and definitely a shift from last year. Uh, and, and I'll remind everyone as Ron as frequently, um, that the NNR has, we can afford it as our city. And I, I, I don't like it. I don't like the verbiage of the law.
Yep.
And, you know, so I'm fundamentally opposed to the verbiage of the law. We're good with it as a city. But it, because it doesn't account for inflation and it's a, it's a flat dollar amount. Um, and so I, I really wish the legislature would wake up and understand things cost more. And so in terms of actual dollars, we're gonna be spending.
More.
We're, we're spending less real money because of, because of the tax rate. The valuations have increased more than the tax rate. In terms of, or in, the, inflation has affected valuations less than your overall inflation, your CPI for our area, so.
Okay, on that, on that motion, who in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last item I do have is number thirteen, but it's just the strategic plan, which we're still working on. And because of the shifts on the, um, personnel, it'll change. So that final draft.
Can we table that and bring it back next?
That's what I was just telling you. I'm just gonna table it and bring it back. I should give the explanation why I wanna table it. So it's on record. Um, but yeah, so we'll have that all for you to the next meeting. Cause a lot did change.
I made the motion and I seconded.
That's, we're good. Mayor tabled it, so.
Okay. So we are officially completed.
We have all the votes we need, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, friend.
We are done.
Alright.
There is no executive session tonight. We're gonna adjourn this session, a budget workshop at.